We call this meeting of the Amador County Board of Supervisors to order on this Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. Board has met in closed session and covered Item 2A, County Negotiators' Labor Negotiations and given direction to staff. With that, can you all stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report recommendations for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. There is a three-minute time limit. Anyone like to address the board today? I had a hand back here first, Lois. Thank you. Steve? You'll be next, Lois. Morning. Hold on just a second. I think we tap on the mic, make sure. There you go.
Hi. I'm Steve Christensen from Sutter Creek. And a while back, I was at a meeting and I was reminded that the Ione Fire Department had opened their facilities as a cooling center during the heat wave that we recently had this year. And I thought that was really great, and so I decided to drive down to Ione and thank Chief Mackey personally for opening the fire department buildings for a heat wave. It gets a little hot in Ione sometimes. While I was there, he showed me a brochure that, or an insert to the newspaper, that he had put together along with the Jackson Rancheria and the Ledger Dispatch called "Out of Darkness." And for those who are watching this over here, and I think I gave one to just about every supervisor except Mr. Brown. Have you get, did you get one?
I've seen it.
You have one of these? Okay. They're a wonderful document on how to prepare for a wildfire. There's also evacuation maps, things to get ready before an emergency, things to pack, and items like that. It's a very useful document, and it should be, like, available to everybody in the county. And so I'm going to leave some copies of this out at the back for those people who are here to be able to pick one up and take it home with them. People who are on Zoom can probably pick one up at the Ione Fire Department. And so I just wanted to kind of do a shout-out and congratulate Chief Mackey down in Ione and think that other fire departments throughout the county should do likewise. One of the other things that they're doing down there is they still have their air raid sirens, probably because they're in close proximity to the nuclear power plant down there. But in case a building, say in downtown Ione, were to catch on fire, it could spread rather rapidly and endanger the entire city. And all they have to do is push their panic button, and the air raid sirens go off to let people know that there's a problem. And that, I think, should be done in all fire departments throughout the county, because some of our towns, like Jacksons, Sutter Creek, Plymouth, if one of their buildings catches on fire, it could spread rapidly, and there might not be time to call everybody or send people text messages. The air raid siren would be a great way to let people know that there's danger. And they do that in Ione, and I think that the other cities should follow their excellent example. Thank you.
That document and the, all the evacuation maps are available. Cindy Ingle from ACTC works with the Amador Fire Safe Council, and the evacuation routes are all available to citizens of the county.
Yes, they are. And this would be a handy thing to have at your house also, so you don't have to look them up online.
Only if you look at it.
Yeah, only if you look at it. So, but it is available.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Lois? I'm going to hold you to the three minutes again, because I know you probably have multiple speakers. And can you pull the microphone down a little, Steve? Thank you.
Okay. Good morning to the board. I'm representing New California State. We want to change our state, get it back the way it was when I was growing up. So we would have lots of water businesses, cheap electricity. New California will build five new dams. We will have inexpensive electricity. We will bring businesses and people back to California. And they cannot fix California because the Constitution, California Constitution has over 900 amendments. They have actually tied the hands of the governor and the people running the state by all of these amendments. And so we would start with a basic amendment, a basic constitution like they had in 1849 when we first formed California. And so every week, we are giving another reason why California is having, is not satisfied, is not doing their job they should be doing for the citizens of the United States and citizens of California. And so I'm going to read just a couple parts of the Third Declaration of Truth by New California. I'll just read just little bits of it, okay? "We, the citizens of New California, have decided to remedy the abuse of power by the government of California by exercising their right to form a new state, provided in United States Constitution, Article 4, Sections 3 and 4. We are determined to live under a state government in the United States of America and under the Constitution of the United States. We are not leaving the country. We will be the 51st state." Okay? There's some misunderstanding about that. "The people of California are suffering from a tyrannical state government which fails to provide a republican form of government, enables and supports across its southern border the invasion of the United States of America by illegal foreign nationals, and protects vicious criminals who commit outrageous acts of violence upon the citizens of America, all caused by a government of and for a mono-party system led by a tyrannical, pusillanimous dictator who openly defies federal law." Article 4, Section 4 of the Constitution says, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government. A republican form of government allows each citizen to have representation." Right now, we have one assemblyman for seven counties, and Los Angeles has 28 assemblymen. This is why the, our government is totally controlled by the people that live in the big cities, the big areas. They have different interests than us in the rural areas. So New California will take the rural parts of the state and will leave the large urban areas to be old California. Make that very clear.
You're just about, just about out of time.
I'm out. Okay, I'm finished. Okay. Chris is going to continue to read part of it. And I walked off without bringing my copies for the board. I'm really sorry. I live really close, and I will bring them back so that you can read these, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning, board. Let me get my name on here before my three minutes starts. This is, I'm Chris Strong from Ione, California. I'm also representing New California. And my timer going here. We're talking, this is the Third Declaration of Truth. This is lawlessness. And once again, this is to provide a solution to the problem. I think we're on the verge of civil war and anarchy due to the lawlessness. And the state of California has failed to prevent the harm and domestic violence increased by the invasion across the border and the sanctuary status that we provide in some cities. And it's in direct violation of the Constitution of the United States, Article 4, Section 4, that guarantees protection from domestic violence. Yet the legislature passes laws that openly permit and encourage acts of violence and lawlessness, the pusillanimous governor who opens the prisons and releases vicious criminals onto the streets who murder, rape, and steal. And California is there, is now under a state where there's widespread wrongdoing, disregard for rules and authority, and near the point of widespread anarchy. The state of California governor and government officials working alongside leaders of foreign governments that are averse to the United States of America facilitate and encourage the flood of illegal foreign nationals into California. The state of California is open, in open defiance of federal law and has declared itself a sanctuary for all persons illegally entering the state. The sanctuary status acts as a magnet for known criminals and terrorists who desire to harm citizens of California and of the United States. And we're seeing this for the past two years, an increasing way. This status brings human trafficking and drug smuggling activities to California, endangering the lives and safety of its citizens. The state of California has failed to prevent invasion, which is in direct violation of the Constitution of the United States, Article 4, Section 4, that guarantees protection from invasion and domestic violence. The state of California has failed to prevent the harm and domestic violence increased by the above-stated invasion, which is a direct violation of the Constitution, Article 4, of the United States, Article 4, Section 4, that guarantees protection from domestic violence. The on-the-ground violence and lawlessness all along the southern border of the United States caused by cartels and gangs is extensive, well-documented, and persistent. It satisfies the definition of "actually invaded" and "invasion" under the Constitution of the United States. To be sure, state and local government officials are actively engaged in the trafficking of human flesh and slavery, with vicious criminal cartels who are trafficking hundreds of thousands of illegal nationals across the border, reaping billions of dollars a year. Today, California is in a state of freefall at all levels, and this freefall has been orchestrated over the last 170 years by socialist and communists who are now reaching near the end of their socialist-communist plan. And I'll just end by saying that betrayal by the sitting pusillanimous socialist governor dictator of California and the mono-party legislature and local elected officials is evidence of abdication of their responsibilities of authority and sovereignty over the citizens of the United States living in California state. And I talk to a lot of people, and we're all very worried about the state of this country, and many of us see we're on the verge of violence and even civil war, which I'm sure our leaders, our communist leaders and bankers would love to have because it weakens the people. But this, this movement, just for the record, is to follow the Constitution and provide a peaceful solution so we can be represented in our government, just like our Constitution actually requires. So, thank you for your time again, gentlemen.
Thank you. Dr. Custer?
Thank you very much, Oral Custer. And I'm here, really, I want to, especially want to support these wonderful people that have spoken just now. Lois McDonald is a great leader for New California State and Christopher Strong. But what was, what is stated, what has already been read, is written by President Paul Pearson for New California State. And I would just like to share a couple of things that I see in connection with the leadership that we're not getting from Governor Newsom. In these difficult times, there is much risk of being misunderstood in what we say. Far-left politicians seem thrilled. They have so much to complain about. And like Governor Newsom, they love to blame all problems on those that really want to do the right thing. Newsom is more than pusillanimous, which means irresolute or cowardly. He is parsimonious and dishonest. In Washington, D.C., this week, he commented in a flashy press briefing, Fox News cut a little bit of what he said, but Gavin was blaming Republican governors for banning books, when, of course, all they hope to do is save children from the influence of pornography. Wicked materials sponsored by the dark side of the forest. Gavin has allowed crime and violence to grow and even flourish in California, much of the problem with arson. Criminals that should have been locked up still commit arson by setting selective fires. Some delinquents create fires, firefighting jobs for themselves by creating, by arson in the forests. But Newsom, by example, fosters many deceptions. He has invited young women that are expecting to come to California for their abortions, making sure that they can, quote, "choose" whether to end the life of their unborn child. That probably comes to about three minutes. Thank you very much.
Oh, you got 30 seconds left.
Okay. You know what? I really appreciate the supervisors, all of you. I think you're doing a good job. And I think you gave a little, a little bit of extra time for us this morning. Chairman Forster?
Give everybody a little bit of extra time.
Thank you very much.
Try to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom? No? Last chance? All right, we'll move on then to our regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, can I just speak right quick?
Yes, under public comment.
Yes. Two things. Last meeting, we talked about PG&E and leaving logs on people's properties. RCRC has reached out to myself and Supervisor Netto and trying to figure out what else we can probably do about assisting us, going out to and making a coalition of possibly in the future with the Motherlode area and plus of the north coast area that are having the same problem with us. The other thing I have, now, the good thing about PG&E is if anybody lives off of Meadow Drive, they're going to be working at putting in undergrounding of power lines along Meadow Drive. So we'll see where this goes. At full length of Meadow to North Meadow. And that's it, Chairman.
I was going to bring that up under the minutes anyway, because I didn't like our suggested action, which was basically to just chew on it for a while. And, yeah, we need to push that issue and, and try to find a more positive resolution than what PG&E gave us that day, which was basically walking around the issue.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other statements? All right, then we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Most carries. Now we go on to the consent agenda.
As it presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Most carries. Thank you. Under our regular agenda, Item 5A, update by our Amador County Health Officer, Dr. Rita Kerr, on the COVID-19 situation in Amador County. And Jennifer, if you could bring her up.
I believe my audio's been unmuted, but I don't have.
You're unmuted, but we, we can't see you yet. So if you could just hold on just a second, Dr. Kerr.
Go on and start your video now.
Okay, I'll try. No, it's still saying the host has stopped it.
Now it should work.
Okay, we've got it. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Forster and county supervisors here for the October update of COVID-19 situation in Amador County. The community level of COVID in Amador County has remained low over the past month, and the level of statewide community immunity has increased over time. However, Omicron variants have developed the ability to escape immunity. While unvaccinated individuals still have a higher risk of infection, those who are previously infected, vaccinated, and boosted have also been experiencing infections. In the latter half of September, several state health officer orders were modified, including rescinded the requirement for screening testing for unvaccinated asymptomatic workers in certain settings, that is, examples are schools and healthcare. And also, visitors to hospitals, nursing homes, and senior care facilities are no longer required to provide proof of vaccination or a negative test result before entering. They are still required to self-screen for symptoms, wear a mask indoors at these healthcare settings, and should not visit if they are sick. As far as the local COVID hospital impact, there are currently two COVID-positive patients hospitalized at Sutter Amador, one of whom is in the ICU on a ventilator. And to date, 407, which is an increase of only three since last month, Amador County residents are known to have been hospitalized because of COVID-19. I will give a little additional context to that. There are several people who have required rehospitalization after having tested positive for COVID a few weeks ago, but I have not counted them twice as having been hospitalized. The average length of stay for hospitalized patients is shorter now than it was last fall and winter. If you'd like to bring up that EPI curve chart that we show each time, as always, the EPI curve shows the laboratory confirmed cases on the blue, and then the little green bars at the top are the probable cases. Those are the ones who've had supervised antigen tests. And as you can see, the trend over the last couple of months has been moving the right direction. We're kind of approaching those lower levels that we were at last spring, which is good news. And the CDC community level map, which gets updated every Thursday, has had Amador at the low level now for over a month. The formula used to assign the CDC community level is a combination of local case rates and regionally hospitalized COVID patients. The pie chart graphs show the geographic distribution of cases within the county, and the pie chart on the left is a cumulative total, and you can see the geography of distribution of those. And then you can see that the active case count is only 15 at this time, but it's widespread throughout the county. And what that tells me is that, that reflects the under-reporting of the home tests. I would expect, if there were active cases, to see only truly 15, that we'd see more clustering of that. But you can see they're pretty widespread around the county. The active cases that are noted here includes confirmed and probable cases that have been reported to public health within the last 10 days, but do not include unsupervised self-tests done at home, which are not consistently reported to public health. Mule Creek State Prison currently has only three active inmate cases. Sadly, since last month, public health has confirmed three additional COVID-19 deaths in Amador residents, a woman in her 80s and two men, one in his 70s and the other in his 50s, who had underlying chronic illness. The total confirmed COVID deaths to date have been 84 Amador County residents and nine Mule Creek State Prison inmates. The state is also going to start on their dashboards, publishing a tally of probable COVID deaths, and those are individuals who had a positive supervised antigen test for COVID, which is counted as a probable case, but did not have a molecular PCR test done at a laboratory to confirm COVID. And to date, three Amador residents have been determined to meet the criteria for probable COVID deaths. Public health extends our sympathy to all who have lost loved ones because of COVID-19. Public Health extends our sympathy to all who have lost loved ones because of COVID-19. Moving on to the COVID-19 vaccine update, the updated bivalent COVID booster vaccines are now available for everyone ages 12 and over. We anticipate that the updated booster formulation will be available for younger children ages five through 11 later this month, possibly as soon as next week. The updated boosters have been tweaked to better match the currently circulating strains of the Omicron Novo- Nava Coronavirus. Timing for the bivalent boosters is at least two months after your most recent dose of COVID vaccine. If you've had a recent COVID infection, the recommendation is to wait at least three months. COVID vaccine primary series must be completed before getting an updated bivalent booster dose, and the mix-and-match option to get a different vaccine for your boosters than you got for your primary series remains available, at least for adults. For boosters, please bring your vaccination card, a photo, or digital verification showing the dates and types of previous doses you received. The COVID vaccine clinics for everyone ages five years and older continue to be held at the Health and Human Services Building at the back entrance on Tuesdays from 8:30 to 11:30 in the morning, and Thursday afternoons from 1:00 to 4:00. Primary series and booster doses are available at these clinics. You may schedule an appointment by visiting myturn.ca.gov or calling 1-833-422-4255. People with appointments are prioritized. Walk-ins must arrive half an hour before the clinic ending time. We are also now offering flu shots that can be given at the same visit during the Health and Human Services Tuesday and Thursday COVID Vaccine Clinic. Unfortunately, we do not have the high-dose flu vaccination formulation, which is recommended for those ages 65 and older, available at the Public Health Clinic. You can check with your doctor or use the Vaccine Finder tool at vaccines.gov to find the kind of flu shot formulation you're looking for. Retail pharmacies continue to offer COVID as well as flu vaccines, and again, that vaccines.gov website is a great spot to check availability and even potentially schedule your appointments. Parents who are interested in having their younger children, ages six months through four years old, vaccinated, should talk with their doctor or may call Public Health at 209-223-6407 to schedule an appointment. A parent or legal guardian must be present at the vaccine appointment. COVID vaccines and boosters are still free of charge for everyone at this time. Most folks coming to the clinics currently are seeking a booster dose; a few are still getting primary vaccine series. The COVID-19 Mobile Vaccination Team provides vaccination for homebound individuals who may schedule a nurse visit by calling 209-223-6407. Moving on to the COVID Testing and Treatments Update, the At-Home Test by U.S. Mail Delivery Program was discontinued as of September 2nd. However, Medicare and Medi-Cal allow pickup of free test kits at pharmacies, and private health insurance pays or reimburses for eight at-home tests per month. Antigen self-test kits are also available for distribution at the Public Health Department and local agency partners. If you test positive, please follow current self-isolation guidelines, inform your close contacts, and promptly seek medical advice to find out if antiviral treatment is recommended for you. The OptumServe testing site at the back entrance of Health and Human Services, Suite 500, remains open on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It was closed yesterday for the holiday, but will resume usual operations tomorrow. You may register for a supervised rapid antigen test at lhicare or by calling 1-888-634-1123. PCR swab collection to be sent off to the lab for testing is still available at the Optum Serve site upon request. Masks continue to be required in healthcare settings in California, including at both vaccination and testing clinics. Optum Serve sites also continue to offer the Test-to-Treat program, where persons who test positive for COVID-19 that are at risk for severe illness are offered an onsite telehealth visit to speak to a provider about oral antivirals, COVID, or Monopiravir, and leave the site with treatment in hand if they're eligible. The medications and the telehealth visit are provided free of charge. These treatments work best when started as soon as possible after symptom onset and must be started within five days. It is necessary to bring a complete list of medications and supplements you're taking with you to the site so that the provider can screen for potential drug-drug interactions. Healthcare providers, such as your own doctor or an urgent care clinic, can also provide the antiviral medications to symptomatic patients that are at increased risk for developing severe COVID-19. Local pharmacies have the pills available for pickup with a prescription. Sutter Amador Hospital also keeps packed COVID pill packs in stock, as well as the injectable monoclonal antibody treatments to treat higher-risk individuals who test positive for COVID-19. A new option from the California Department of Public Health is another telehealth option that can be accessed from home to support COVID-19 treatment access in underserved areas. Anyone who tests positive, including with a home test, should contact their provider as soon as possible. If you do not have or are unable to reach a healthcare provider, this new program provides access to a virtual telehealth visit. If you've tested positive and are symptomatic, you may be evaluated for treatment. Appointments may be scheduled online with Sesame Care by calling 1-833-686-5051. Both Optum Serve and Sesame Care services are provided at no cost. Prevention is still the best medicine. Being vaccinated and getting an updated booster remains the safest way to prevent serious illness, hospitalization, and death from COVID-19. Have you shown the injectable medicine that can be given every six months to prevent COVID-19 infections in persons who cannot receive a COVID vaccination for medical reasons or whose immune system is not strong enough to mount a good response to vaccine continues to be available locally at the Sutter Amador Infusion Center with a physician's referral? Consider your own and your family's risk when making decisions about COVID precautions. Recommendations remain: Stay up to date with COVID-19 vaccinations, including the new bivalent booster. Get tested if you've been exposed before and after travel and/or if you have symptoms. Wear a mask if you have symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. It's a good idea to wear a mask on public transportation, and you may choose to wear a mask at any time to protect yourself and others. If you're at high risk for severe illness, consider taking additional precautions, being strategic about attending indoor gatherings or events, and preferably meeting outdoors or at least opening windows for ventilation. Anyone who feels ill, even with mild symptoms, should get tested and stay home while awaiting the results. Don't feel great? Please isolate. Are there any questions I can address this morning?
Any board member questions? Supervisor Axe.
Dr. Kerr, this is Supervisor Axe. I heard that maybe you can confirm this, that COVID-19 is probably gonna be around for a while, but this is now considered the number-two cause of death in the U.S. ahead of cancer?
Correct. That was true in 2021.
Okay. Still is, huh?
Any other board questions? Any public comments?
Steve Christensen. I was just curious on the effect or dangers to people who catch COVID multiple times, if you could comment on that.
There, yes, thank you for that question. That research is ongoing, but early indicators are that those who catch COVID multiple times are at higher risk for the syndrome that's being called long COVID, which is thought to be an inflammat, a prolonged inflammatory response that can damage organs, including the cardiovascular system, leading to things like what's called POX, postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome, where when they go from lying down to sitting up, their blood pressure drops, their heart rate elevates, and they have a sense of dizziness or vertigo. Chronic fatigue-like syndrome is very common, and then there are others who develop respiratory, chronic respiratory conditions with scarring, much like emphysema.
Okay. Supervisor Orneto.
You know, a follow-up question to that statement, Dr. Kerr. Vaccinations basically give you like a reaction, and you get like a reaction to the vaccine, and it's supposed to kind of make your immune system react and put up your defenses. Could that almost conversely bring about that long COVID-type symptoms, if you're saying that? The defense?
It's a good question. Yes, good question, and thank you for that question. And the answer is, at this point, it's actually looking like being vaccinated is protective against development of long COVID, even if you have a breakthrough infection. And while that may seem intuit, not intuitively or converse, it has to do with the degree of inflammation rather than the innate immune response, excuse me, the degree of inflammation from a COVID infection is much higher than that that is conferred by a controlled dose of the spike protein that you get from a vaccination.
Well, I just hope they're getting all their charts and graphs and numbers right.
That's why we continue to keep studying it, continuing to have people report in. And there are many centers now studying post-infection as well with follow-up surveys and, you know, just trying to learn about this, to continue to learn about this virus now that we're in our third year of this pandemic.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? All right. Seen none? Thank you, Dr. Kerr, very much for your report.
Welcome.
All right. Move on to item 5. Item 5B. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Adoption and Presentation of Resolution in Memory of Ruth Gottstein. Hope I'm saying that right. Adam, is that right? Gottstein? Gottstein. Of Ruth Gottstein for her life of service and accomplishment. And Supervisor Axe brought this forward, so I've asked him to present the resolution.
Okay. I'm gonna read the resolution first, and then we'll present it.
I'm reminded by my vice chair, we need to take action to approve it first, so. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion then to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, it's all yours.
Okay, so this is a resolution in memory of Ruth Gottstein for her life of service and accomplishment. Whereas Ruth Gottstein was born in San Francisco in 1922 and passed away in Volcano in August 2022 at the age of 100, whereas at age 11, Ruth was portrayed in a Coit Tower mural by her father, artist Bernard Zachheim. And she lived through the challenging and tumultuous events of the Great Depression. And whereas Ruth married Howard Gottstein in 1939, and together, they raised three children, Daniel, Karen, and Adam, in San Francisco's Haydasbury neighborhood. Whereas after beginning to regularly vacation in Amador County in the early 1950s, the Gottstines bought the old brewery in Volcano in 1964. Then after Howard's untimely death, Ruth relocated to Amador in 1984 and ran Volcano Press from that restored historic building, also her residence, until her retirement in 2016 at age 94. Whereas motivated by her love of books and passion for social justice, Ruth published the first American book about domestic violence at Glide Publications in San Francisco in 1976, and continued to publish national award-winning books about domestic violence, women's health, Jewish themes, Amador County history, and art at Volcano Press. And whereas living a purpose-filled life defined by social and political causes and with a well-deserved reputation for doing the right thing, Ruth was a staunch and vocal advocate for civil rights, the La Raza movement, women's rights, labor, victims of domestic violence, and LGBTQ rights. And whereas Ruth was active in Amador County as a member of the local Jewish community, a strong supporter of Amador County's library, a senior columnist for the Up Country News, and a board member of the Area 12 Agency on Aging. And whereas Ruth honored her father's memory and the importance of public art by playing a key role in the preservation and restoration of Coit Tower and in saving her father's History of Medicine in California murals in the University of California, San Francisco Medical Center, Tolland Hall. And whereas the proud and loving matriarch of her family, Ruth delighted in introducing her four grandchildren to travel abroad and hosting family holiday gatherings at her volcano home, where her extended family shared delicious meals, good wine, and joyous laughter. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Amador County, State of California, that that said board does hereby adopt this resolution, Memory of Ruth Gottstein, recognizing her great personal integrity and her years of service to humanity, learning, art, and Amador County. The foregoing resolution was duly passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Amador at the regular meeting on the 11th day of October. All right, so, Adam?
I think as you walk down, Ruth deserves a round of applause for her accomplishment. Let Supervisor present the resolution, and then I imagine you have a few words,
First of all, thank you very much to Supervisor Axe for spearheading this resolution, making sure that it happened. I'm impressed with the board that you would vote to approve it before you even heard it. Good job, gentlemen, and thank you. Brevity there. And to Catherine Evatt for developing the resolution language. Our family is deeply indebted that this county would recognize Ruth Gottstein and her lifetime of achievement. You mentioned her relationship to her four grandchildren. She once admitted to them, to me, and anyone who would listen to her, that she was not your cookies and milk kind of grandma. That's an understatement. She understood how funny and ironic that was and stood by it. She took them all traveling. They benefited from their grandmother's existence on this planet. But I will also say that the publishing of books on the subject of domestic violence has quite literally saved lives. Ruth Gottstein was a pioneer in the book publishing industry and recognized quite literally around the world. Many Volcano Press books have been translated into other languages, including a compendium on child abuse and neglect. So her legacy is firmly intact. She recognized the beauty of Amador County, realized that she did want to live here, bought the brewery with my father in 1964, but had been coming up here even before that, and truly loved the community as reflected in her involvement here in Amador. I would be remiss if I did not say, on my mother's behalf, that her political beliefs and opinions did not always align with the prevailing attitudes and politics here in Amador County. That would go back 40 years, to say the least. It's no secret. And quite literally, as I am standing here and speaking before this board, I will tell you that my mother is continuing to be her activist self from beyond the grave. She passed away on August 30th. But a year ago, when a new form of dealing with the human body was being developed post-death, it's a process called terimation, and it's a green alternative to cremation. So as I'm before you right now, my mother is being terimated in one of the five states in which it is now legal, and that would be Washington State. After she passed, I drove my mother's body up to a location just outside of Seattle, and she is being composted. And she will come back to our home in Volcano to supplement trees and shrubs and bulbs, not our vegetable garden. But again, I, I explained what this process was to my mother a year ago, and she said, sure, absolutely, I agree to do that. I'm gone, what do I care? And I said, well, it's the right thing to do, Mom. It's going to turn some of the death care industry on its ear. It'll challenge the people with traditional cremation and burial and coffins, but why not, Mom? You've spent 100 years defining political odds, and here you are today, still doing that. So again, thank you to this board for recognizing my mother, but also recognizing that at times you were perhaps on the other side of the table, facing her opinion. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ask if there's any public comment before we move on. And, oh, Ms. Dunn. Good morning.
Gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to address you today, and thank you for providing this opportunity to speak on behalf of, not on behalf, but in regards to Ruth Gottstein. Ruth Gottstein changed my life. She not only changed my life, she changed the course of my life. And I'm only one of many. You want to honor Ruth? Be more like her. Hold an open mind on everything. Listen respectfully to all sides of every issue. Work hard at refraining from political prejudice. Pink, green, orange, left, right, upside down, black, white, or purple, none of it matters when considering matters that improve Amador County. Ruth was an exemplary citizen everywhere she resided. It was an honor to know her and an honor to call her mentor and my friend. Amador County hosts a multitude of really smart, talented people that tend to get ignored because of their political beliefs. You want to honor Ruth? Please listen to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? I will say, I saw a picture one time of Ruth and Olive Howe, who I really loved Olive, but they were at a protest someplace, and they were much younger. It was quite a picture, so. Great testament to, to Ruth's life and.
Is there anybody on Zoom wanting to comment? Okay.
Okay. Thank you for being here, Adam, and all those that wish to honor Ruth, so thank you. We will move on to item five C. Discussion of possible action relative to using, modifying the NEXA study and granting impact fee funds to support improvements to Veterans Park in Plymouth. Supervisor Ornetto, you want to lead this?
Sure. What this, what this is, you have the Veterans Park Committee and the Amador Foothills Rotary that have been working on this as far as trying to get a Veterans Park in Plymouth, some improvements done there. And Mr. Jim Wise has kind of been spearheading the effort, and I believe he has some of the numbers he'd like to talk about in the request for funding, because they're looking at having some memorial done by Stockton Monument Company. It's roughly $91,000. I think it'd be nice if we could put a few extra dollars in there in case you have a little bit of extras or overruns that are needed. And so that's kind of what the request is, is basically provide that funding, and I think you're looking at roughly about half the cost. It needs to be provided to get the work started. And then upon the completion of memorial work, the remainder. And I think Mr. Jim Wise would like to speak this matter.
Yeah, it would have been nice to have a, a map here. I think we've seen one before, at least a draft map before of the project. I have a couple of questions after Mr. Wise's.
Okay.
Good morning.
Thank you Supervisor Ornetto, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and staff. Again, want to thank you for an opportunity to come before you this morning. With me, I would point out, is John Colburn, the Vice Chairman of the Veterans Park Committee. I've got the privilege of serving as the Chairman of the committee, an all-volunteer entity, as you know, representing a collaborative effort between the City of Plymouth and the Rotary Club Foundation. We've been working hard to try to craft and develop a plan for the park. And as Mr. Ornetto, Supervisor Ornetto has indicated, we have put out for competitive bid, one element of the park, which is the acquisition, the installation, and the engraving of the names of all of those who have provided service to our six military branches. And those will be honored in our Veterans Park with the idea that it would be an interactive park so that it is not just a memorial to the service members, but it is also a mechanism by which we would provide picnic opportunities and tables to draw people into the park, with the theory being that you can memorialize and honor individuals, but if you don't have some attractive elements to bring them into the park, such honoring is probably not at its highest potential. So I have, I think, provided to the board a narrative outline that describes what we have envisioned for the park. The actual and final layout is, is pretty close. We'll be going to the Plymouth Planning Commission and City Council for their approval for the layout and the creation of the improvements within the park. I've also, I believe, provided for, to the County Board, the totality of the proposed draft budget for the park itself. I would hasten to add that the proposed complete budget for the park at this point is about $435,000. This first request of funding coming to the Amador County Board of Supervisors is to handle the acquisition of the granite that's to be placed there. There is an invoice that we have received from Stockton Monument Company already. As Supervisor Ornetto has indicated, it is approximately $91,000. Because of a little bit of lead time that we need, as the supply chain has provided some challenges, we need about 50% of that to allow them to move forward, to acquire the granite, and to begin the work of doing the engraving and the installation. So I appreciate Supervisor Ornetto and his efforts on our behalf to at least get 50% and maybe a little bit more of that $90,000, $91,000 to allow us to move forward. I understand that there was a desire to see a map of the park. We're happy to provide that, and we'll do so immediately. And I don't know if there's any other questions that I could answer or have my Vice Chairman, Mr. Colburn, answer for you at this time, but happy to do so.
So you're asking for $91,000 in the impact fees plus the contingency, is that?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
What would the contingency be, you think?
Probably like about $5,000.
Put it at $96,000?
Yeah, and I, I think right now we're looking for, what, half that amount?
That, that would be great. I mean, yes, that's correct, Supervisor Ornetto. That would allow us a little bit of wiggle room to move forward with some other elements of the park. We've got the installation of additional picnic pavilions that we're putting in. We're putting in walking paths, a couple of foot bridges across the Oreo Ditch, which surrounds the park. We've been working with Caltrans, which is installing a walking hiking trail along Highway 49, and we've been working with Caltrans to ensure that they will extend a spur of that trail into Veterans Park to provide a good pedestrian mechanism for the citizens of Plymouth to take advantage of the park.
You know, one question I'd have, Jim, is that about $50,000 is set aside for long term, long-term upkeep? And I guess this is kind of a staff question, too, is if you, if it, if the funding comes out of impact fees, that would be able to save some memorial fund money for maintenance, which it can be used for that, where like the impact fees cannot be used for maintenance?
Correct. Impact fees cannot be used for maintenance, have to be used to create capacity. So, so the creation of the park or improvement to the park would be eligible for impact fees, but not maintenance.
So we should probably make sure we keep some of that Memorial Hall Fund back for, for the maintenance portion?
Yes, and, and I would just publicly state that we've had an opportunity to have a brief discussion. Those maintenance and upkeep costs are to be shared between the foundation and the City of Plymouth. I think that would, a reasonable approach would be to ensure that there are some requirements that are imposed upon the City of Plymouth, because this is a city park, to ensure that there is a methodology and a ratio that makes some sense for both entities.
Jim, have you discussed that with the City of Plymouth?
Yes, we have.
I'm just curious, why, why do you need two walking bridges instead of one?
Mr. Chairman, the idea is that we would create a walking trail around the entire perimeter of the park. Along one side of it will be, and part of this granite, will be the installation of six styluses that will each tell a brief narrative of the history of each service branch. The idea is to move people in an, in an area around the park. They would enter over the first footbridge across Oreo Ditch near Empire Street, have the potential of coming all the way around the park. The second footbridge would actually align directly with the approach into the semicircle memorial itself, exit back out. Our desire is then to provide some senior exercise equipment on the south side of Oreo Ditch, allowing them to do a complete loop all the way around the park. We think we've got a pretty good line on dedicated and perhaps donated material for the assistance with the bridge material itself.
And the restrooms, are they going to be full? Restrooms with men, with male and female, or could you make them unisex and possibly save a little bit of money?
Thank you for the question. The idea would be to make them unisex if we possibly could, with an effort to try to save the money. We've got it built in a little bit of technology to ensure that there is some safety considerations so that they're locked at night. I would say that we're trying to address a little bit of an issue that the proposed and the desired location may be in a FEMA floodplain, so we're trying to work the specific location of that out, and that's the only really little variable that we have with respect to the restroom at the moment.
You know, one question I did have as far as the senior exercise equipment, you're looking at eight units. Do you think eight units would be utilized, or could you go with a lesser amount? Just a thought. Maybe add some later, later date if you need more, just make it, build it so you could add more.
I think that's a prudent approach, and I think that that just is a contingent of, of the budget that we're looking at and our ability to go out and raise some private sector dollars to assist with that. But, but I think that that's a very reasonable approach, yes.
Jim, is there any other pressure by other groups for funding out of that North County park impact fees?
I would yield to Supervisor Ornetto on that question.
As far as groups, I'd say no. I do, I would say as far as Memorial Hall Fund, Stephanie Moreno had, quite a while back, had some reservations about that. Other than that, I really hadn't heard any.
If I could address that, I believe that those concerns that she articulated have, have been addressed. And I think of the design and the methodology by which we have tried to do community outreach to ensure that there was input into this design process, I believe have ameliorated a lot of the concerns that she articulated then.
Okay, no other board questions?
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on Zoom.
I was going to ask for a public comment from our immediate audience. Any public comment from anyone here? Then let's go to Zoom.
Ms. Grandbois, go ahead when you're ready.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Grandbois, county resident, and I had a couple of questions, please.
Go ahead.
How much effort has been put into raising money from the general public? Have you received donations for this?
We have, on both questions. We have received both private and public donations. A lot of the public donations have come through the Rotary, both local and, and national thus far. We have gone on the local radio station to ask for two things, actually. Not only donations from the public, as well as ensuring that we're doing an exhaustive search for individuals whose names should be eligible to be included on the memorial. And we've been working with the American Legion as well to partner with them on private sector fundraising as well.
I've noticed other places have done things like in Mountain Ranch, they sold naming rights of picnic tables to families that wanted to commemorate their loved ones or just wanted to be remembered as supporting the veterans cause. I've seen bricks sold that are inlaid into sidewalks that help run, raise money for general upkeep. Over in Volcano, they have a donation box outside the restroom to help pay for supplies for the restroom. Have you considered any of these things?
We have. These are great questions. The bricks is one that we have discussed. That becomes kind of an element of the overall design, given the concrete that we are, I, I think, more inclined to utilize for the base of all the monuments themselves. However, the potential of creating an art piece on the south side of the entrance affords us an opportunity to utilize both the bridges for putting some type of a memorial or a recognition of donations to be built in a little bit to the side of the bridges, as well as to the art piece that we are envisioning as an entryway into the park. I would hasten to add that we have been, we have met with Amador County Public Schools to create an art project using art students to create an art piece that would enhance that same overall entrance way to the park.
Thank you for taking the time to answer my question. If the board decides to move ahead with this, I just would like to see this park as a genuine collaboration of the entire county, so that the entire county can take pride in it and the service that's been provided by our county to the armed forces. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think Cindy's got a good point. When, when the Ione Veterans Park was built, it was done largely with citizen donations. Jamie, did you have a question or comment?
Good morning. Jamie Labenco, District Five and Plymouth-Foot Hills Rotaryian. Thank you to the board for taking my comments this morning. I was spurred to speak by Cindy's question because I have served as the chair of numerous events for the Plymouth-Foot Hills Rotary Club that specifically benefit the Veterans Park. So, we have for the last several years had a, it was called a taco takeover at Amador Brewing Company. Amador Brewing Company has been a big supporter of this project. Those events always happened around Veterans Day, and a portion of the proceeds of the sales from Amador Brewing Company on that day went to the Veterans Park, as well as all the money that we raised by slinging tacos. We've slinged cheeseburgers, pancakes, all kinds of things to raise money. And because this is the perfect opportunity to promote the Harvest Fest, we are having a Harvest Fest the Rotary Club is hosting on October 22nd in Plymouth. And the proceeds from that event also go to the Veterans Park. So, we have an event annually that raises between $3,000 to $10,000, I think is the highest we've ever raised at one of these events, to help fund the Veterans Park. If any of you are a fantastic chili maker, we encourage you to sign up for the Chili Cookoff at that Veterans Park fundraiser on the 22nd. We would love to have you there. Thank you, and thank you again to the board for consideration of this park and Mr. Onetto for his leadership here today.
If this was a Rotary meeting, you might be fined for all that shameless promotion.
Shameless yell promotion. I was just thinking that same thing, Mr. Chairman.
Any other public comment?
Our Veteran Services Officer is on Zoom.
Good morning, everybody. How you all doing down there?
Good.
Hey, I just wanted to chime in and say thank you, Jim, for getting in front of the board and asking for this. And I want you all to know that I support it with 100%, and I'm on the Veterans Committee, so I'm very much involved. So, let's move forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jerry. Supervisor Neto?
And one other thing to address, the donations and stuff along that line. I think once it starts getting off the ground, there's a lot of people in the county and District Five. Hey, they love their county, they love their veterans. I think you'll see a lot of financial help come in. I know it's like, I'll help with the wood as far as the fencing and the bridge, so. And I think you'll find a lot of members of the community will step up and help out.
I hope so. That's always been the lifeblood of this county. I know Ione has changed a little bit now with the new city manager, that they're not allowing much volunteer work at all. It's all got to be done with prevailing wage. So, unfortunately, you have to deal with that issue on two, I'm sure.
The contracting entity is technically the Rotary Foundation, not the city.
That's good.
I think Ione needs to talk to their city manager.
Yep. Well, that's up to the city council in Ione. So, board has several actions to consider here. One is direct staff to modify the Nexus study so the project would be eligible for this use. And then board action to authorize 91,000 for the monument. It requires a 50% deposit, and then a $5,000 contingency is what I heard authorization.
Yes.
Yeah, that works. And you know what I'm thinking? It'd probably have to come out of the Memorial Fund at this point. And then, once the Nexus study gets modified, additional funds could come out of there. I think, one I've heard, because I'm on the committee, there's going to be a lot more work in trying to raise funds locally. This will kind of get the project going. People can say, hey, there's something going on. I want to be part of that. So, yeah, I like that idea, and I guess we can do 91,000, but now we'll probably, that'll be paid on a reimbursable basis, probably Stockton Monument.
We've got the, we've got the bill from the monument already that we could pay off of. So, we would pay that rather than paying the money to, directly to the Mr. Weiss's.
Yes, we'll probably pay half of that, get them started. Once they get finished, then we'll pay the other half.
Correct.
Okay.
I want to be, can you make the motion and be specific on your motion?
Yep. Well, I'll make a motion as far as on the Veterans Park in Plymouth that will direct staff to modify the Nexus study also, and will make available $96,000 to pay bills coming from Stockton Monument Company, and.
Where would that 96 come from?
It'd be coming from Veterans Memorial Hall Fund.
Isn't it North County park impact fee?
No.
The issue with paying it out of the impact fee immediately would be that we can't pay it until we get the impact fee, until the Nexus study is revised.
Okay.
So, this would be faster.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't know how long it'll take to get the Nexus modified, so. And the funds are available in the Veterans Memorial Hall, so it's cleaner that way.
But aren't we voting that the 96,000 is going to come once the Nexus study has been updated from the North County park impact fee?
No.
Oh, the money's already in the Memorial Fund.
Okay.
And there's like, there's like 202,000 in that Memorial Fund, and that would still leave you like, you know, 110,000 roughly, to go towards. It's more fungible funds, so I'd like to kind of keep some of that back at some point.
And then future contributions could be made out of the impact fee fund if needed.
Yeah. That's my motion.
For a second. Any further discussion? I just think that's a lot of money, so it's, that's why I think the fundraising is critical. We can leave some of this money in the funds to promote other activities within the district that would be desirable.
No, I agree 100% Richard.
Thank you, and just for clarification, if I may, then, so that I can alert Stockton Monument Company, the payment will not be a pass-through through the foundation. It will be directly from the county to Stockton Monument. Is that accurate?
Can you give them an answer to that? Our county auditor has to come up for this one.
Who really knows?
We would pay the invoice that you've given me. It would go directly to Stockton Monument, yes.
I'll let them know.
Right.
Okay. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it on behalf of our committee.
Voting.
Thank you. I think we had a motion in a second, so, yeah, I was waiting for Mr. Weiss to finish. No further, no further comments?
Better wait for the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most carries. Thank you.
Ah, you got it.
I think we have enough time to go to Item 5D, Presentational Update of the No Place Like Home Program and Approval of the Supportive Services MOU between Amador County Behavioral Health Services, Danco Communities, and Danco Property Management. Good morning.
Good morning.
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 So, go ahead and you can move to the next slide. And so, we are back to talk about No Place Like Home today because we were officially awarded the competitive funds. So, this is just an overview of what we're going to go over today, the purpose of No Place Like Home, and then a brief history of what we've done up until this point, just to refresh everyone's memory, because it's been a little while since we've been here to give you all an update. And then we'll give you some specific updates about the No Place Like Home project and the overview of the MOU, which is kind of the next step. And then we'll have Danco, who's on Zoom, will give some more specifics about the project. So, I'm going to hand it over to James from Housing Tools, and he will go on the next slides.
Are those specifics going to include any interaction with the city of Sutter Creek?
Yes, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Forrester and Supervisors. It's good to be back with you again today to provide an update on the No Place Like Home program. I'm James Coles with Housing Tools, and we've been assisting the county with the No Place Like Home program over the last few years. So, I'll provide an update overall about progress and MOU, and then Chris Dart from Danco can provide an update and more specifics of the development project. So, first on, we'll just talk about the purpose of the NPLH program. You can go back one slide, I think, or a couple of slides there. Yeah, there we go. So, No Place Like Home or the NPLH program funds the development of permanent supportive housing. And this is housing that combines affordable, stable homes with supportive services. And this type of housing increases self-sufficiency, improves housing stability, and reduces cost impacts of homelessness on public services. NPLH incentivizes affordable housing developers to work with county behavioral health departments to build and operate permanent supportive housing. So, just a brief history. 2019, Amador County hired Housing Tools to assist with the NPLH program. And in 2020, the county worked with Housing Tools and the Homeless Task Force to prepare a 10-year plan to address homelessness. And then in 2021, the county published a request for qualifications for a development sponsor for the NPLH program in selected Danco communities. On November 23rd, 2021, the Amador County Board of Supervisors approved two resolutions. One was for 500,000 in NPLH non-competitive funds to be reserved for the Danco project, and then also to apply for competitive allocation funds. And the county and Danco communities applied for those funds on January 19th of this year, and we're excited to report that the State Department of Housing and Community Development did award just over $8 million to the Danco project on June 28th, 2022, although they required us to wait a little bit to come out with the public announcement. So, we're pleased to report on that major piece of funding that has been secured for the project. The MOU before you for approval was also as part of the November 23rd, 2021 Board of Supervisors Resolution. It's formalizing, more formalizing the arrangement and responsibilities of the county and Danco. The resolution passed in November of last year authorized Alameda County Behavioral Health to provide supportive services to residents of the NPLH project. And the MOU between the county and Danco establishes the responsibilities of the two parties in developing and operating the NPLH project. I'm going to summarize the roles of Danco and Alameda County Behavioral Health. Danco is the developer for this project and will own and operate it. They are required to plan, finance, and build the project, comply with all loan requirements, including long-term affordability. They will provide and manage 22 units for NPLH-assisted households, and they will also provide 24 units of affordable workforce housing, which has a little bit higher rents, is open to, generally is for the workforce in providing family housing. And they will provide property management, including onsite manager, front desk, security, and maintenance staff, maintain the property in compliance with loan requirements, and notify behavioral health of any vacancies of NPLH-assisted units. They will comply with applicable local, state, and federal regulations and provide annual financial reports, audits to the county. The Danco's obligations are enforced through a deed of trust and regulatory agreement with state housing and community development. The value of the property essentially is used as security to ensure compliance. Also, the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee Regulatory Agreement. These recorded documents ensure affordability covenants are maintained for 55 years, funding of reserves to maintain the property and provide for improvements, property maintenance, and annual financial audit and performance reports.
We need to roll the slide up. Thank you. Now up to, there we go.
So, yeah, one more slide, or one more. There we go. Alameda County Behavioral Health will provide supportive services to residents of NPLH-assisted units. This includes mental health, case management, substance abuse, healthcare, childcare, education, employment, and connect residents to services within the community. The county will coordinate with Central Sierra Continuum of Care to screen and refer potential tenants to NPLH-assisted units, provide 24/7 crisis intervention as needed, and coordinate with the property manager to prevent evictions. Next, we will, I'll stop here if you have any questions for me, and then after that, we'll turn the time over to Chris Dart at Danco to provide an update on the development.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, you said Alameda?
I am sorry. Amador County.
Okay.
Alameda County does have the Amador Valley.
It's a little different county, sure. Sorry about that.
Send us a check.
Danco has to manage the property. What is the timeline on that? For as long as the property is used for this purpose?
Yeah, Danco will enter into covenant, a 55-year covenant, as I said, for providing the housing at affordable rents. So, they do the long-term property management over that period. They have an in-house property management arm, and I'm sure Chris can speak more to that if you have more questions. But I think that was an important aspect to ensure stability for the project, for the county's interests.
You know, one question I had is, I know the city of Sutter Creek had questions as far as the policing of that area. Who's going to be on the hook for providing that? Was that ever addressed?
Well, one of the things, and I think Chris at Danco can speak further this. One of the things that Danco wanted to do, which is not always typical in these developments, is to provide front desk security and then to coordinate with.
I saw that, but what's front desk security?
Well, they can provide more detail about that, but that's not an insignificant, you know, budget item and commitment. I know in these types of projects that the owners like to coordinate closely with the local police department. They also coordinate closely with Amador County's Behavioral Health and emergency services to address any emergencies or issues or problems that the tenants may be having. So, I think it's going to take close coordination between the different local departments. And I think a big step towards that is having the front desk security and involve property management that's working with the local entities.
Got to answer a question, Supervisor?
I'd be kind of curious what the, maybe Chris at Danco, you said, can answer it? Like, what is the front desk security? I mean, what's that entail?
Okay, yeah, well, I think we can let Chris answer that when he does his presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Yes. You're on.
Good. Good morning. Thanks for having us here again. Glad to give you an update today. Yeah, so I mean, I'll just answer those questions first while they're top of mind. That's all right. So, the front desk security, which we call 24-hour desk service, essentially means that we'll have somebody there present, working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And we typically do that in our supportive housing projects. And their role is in the general, you know, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, that person will be the property manager that lives on. But they'll also be responsible to, you know, report any incidents or, you know, help solve any incidents that could happen onsite. But then, once that shift is over, that leaves two other shifts, because there's 24 hours in a day, so two more shifts, and that will be front desk staff. So they're there to essentially, you know, help get de-escalation training, but they also are closely connected with, as James mentioned, with, you know, local law enforcement, as well as emergency services. Typically host monthly meetings with those different agencies at our community rooms, so they can come in and we can stay closely connected and, you know, continually stay in conversation about any incidents or issues that any of those agencies are seeing, and just take an active role in making sure that the community is operating safely and that all issues are being addressed. So that's essentially it. And as James mentioned, it is a very expensive, you know, to have 24-hour service, but we found that for supportive housing, it really makes the project work and function. And so that's part of the No Place Like Home Award that was funded for the, of the $8 million that was mentioned. $4 million of that is in operating reserve to cover costs like that. So we're happy that the award came through. And so further on, you know, that is really good news, that we did receive the official award of the No Place Like Home project of the $8 million. As mentioned, these funds will be the funds needed to leverage the remaining funds to get the project built. The remaining funds being primarily 9% tax credits through the Tax Credit Allocation Committee in Sacramento. Their competition is based on having other sources of funds, and $8 million is a substantial award and puts us in a very strong, if not guaranteed, position to win that, to win that competition when we apply, if we apply, in the first quarter 2023. But I, so that's the good news. The bad news is the project is high-centered, and it is currently stalled. And I'm just going to give you a little background on that for the record. So we submitted our plans to the city, our initial submitted to the City of Sutter Creek for site plan and design review on January 18th, 2022. And then they issued a response letter fairly quickly on February 4th, 2022, that required that we make a number of corrections to our plans, which we did, made those corrections, and resubmitted those on May 24th. And then the City of Sutter Creek subsequently responded to those corrections again on June 24th. But they added some items, one of which we're struggling with, which is having will-serve letters issued from the utilities. If you are sure aware, the City of Sutter Creek provides sewer, but the water is from the Amador Water Agency, Amador County Water Agency. So we did reach out to the water agency and had several conversations with Brant Cook, and then also their operations manager, Rick Fiera. And initially with Brant, and then he brought in Rick from the agency, their operations manager, and he let us know that they had concerns with water treatment and water storage, and that it would, they likely would not be able to serve our development in a conversation we had. So then, we then asked, was there an official moratorium for the county in place that we were not aware of? And he responded, no, that there wasn't. And so then, Rick then further went on to explain that they have existing will-serve letters, their policy is that they have existing will-serve letters that they've issued out there to different properties, and that they have to count those as capacity, even though many of those he mentioned were issued and are, don't have current plans to develop anything and/or any current development applications on file, yet they have will-serve letters that they consider taking up capacity. And so it seemed to us that, you know, in that conversation, that there was potential that they could either change policy or look into finding a way that, since those developments aren't moving forward, that they could move us to the top of the list and give us service, given that we have a project that we're currently proceeding ahead with and now actually have funding, so even more so. So then, we had some back-and-forth conversations, then the water agency issued us a letter dated August 30th, further clarifying the Tanner Water Treatment Plant had insufficient reliable water treatment capacity and water storage capacity to serve our project. And there was mention, they also mentioned that they had plans to develop and expand the existing water treatment plant and capacity, but they didn't give us any commitment as to when that was going to take place. So then, following that letter, and again, we're working to fulfill on the City of Sutter Creek's request to provide a will-serve letter, which is why we're going through this back-and-forth. Following that letter from the water agency, Danco then issued a response letter after doing research, reminding them that they have obligations under state law, SB 1087, to prioritize affordable housing. And we informed them that this is an affordable housing project, and that we respectfully asked them to provide copies of the specific written findings, if the conditions referenced in their letter were necessary due to the lack of supply, as well as the written policies for prioritizing services for affordable housing in accordance with the government code. That letter went out Friday, the 30th of September. It was CC'd the Department of Community Housing and Community Development, County of Amador, Behavioral Health Staff in the City of Sutter Creek, and as of today, we have not received a response. That's why the project's high-centered. We do have, our timing has been that we, you know, if we're able to work through the water agency issue and receive our approvals through the City of Sutter Creek for the AB 2162 by right approval, then we would be in a position to apply for the remaining financing in the first quarter of 2023. Usually, it's the end of February, beginning of March. The date hasn't been set yet for tax credit. If successful with that financing, which we have a high probability of, we would be awarded those funds in June 2023, and would be under construction by the end of next year. We're anticipating approximately 12 to 16 months of construction, so the housing, at worst case, would be ready to serve the residents by the end of the first quarter of 2025. So we'd like to point out that, you know, technically, we wouldn't even need water service until the point in time when the residents live in the facility, which again is anticipated in 2025. So it seems like we should be able to move ahead, given the water agency has and intends to do expansions to the Tanner Water Treatment Plant, given that, you know, we're several years out from actually needing water. But if you need to move ahead, these funds from the state, the No Place Like Home funds, you know, they're not good forever. They will give extensions, but there's no guarantee, and they will take them back if performance doesn't happen within certain timeframes. And so that's a concern. But as of today, we're just working to try to resolve on the water issues, so we can resubmit our application to the City of Sutter Creek and hopefully get a final approval, and then prepare for applying for financing. And that concludes my comments. I'm here for any questions.
Well, I guess, how long do you sit back and wait for a response, again, from the Amador Water Agency?
Yeah, we've been, we've been talking about that amongst our team, and I think, at this point, I think it's probably, given that we do have a response to them, from them, that we would prepare our application to the City of Sutter Creek and resubmit with that response. In addition to that, we didn't find anywhere in the City of Sutter Creek's statute that site and plan approval, that their will-serve letters are a requirement of that, so we're also looking into that as well.
Any comments?
We have Larry out in the audience.
Yeah. Any board comments? Sir, would you like to say that the go-ahead is imminent?
Good morning, Larry McKenney, Amador Water Agency.
I didn't recognize you without your hat.
It's on my chair back there. My mommy told me not to. We're indoors. So I want to make sure everybody knows, we don't have any political stake in this project one way or another, other than we'd like to support the county in being able to use the grant funds that it has. We have very real and substantial constraints on the capacity of both our Amador and Ion Water Treatment Plants, that are a major focus of our capital improvement planning right now. The posture of this project, from our perspective, was that we received a letter of a request for a determination of water availability. That's usually step one out of three in a process to get to a will-serve letter. We aren't dealing with a request for a will-serve letter at this point. And normally, when we're doing a determination of water availability, we look at water supply availability and treatment plant capacity availability, but we're doing that with an uncertain timeline, because we're usually dealing with development that may or may not occur. Our response to the request for a determination of water availability was that, at the present time, the treatment is, treatment capacity is constrained, and that we could not say that we would be able to have capacity to serve, to serve the development in the future. The letter that we received back on the policy issue for affordable housing, we received that letter last week, there was nothing in the original application material that described the development as affordable housing. So we're going back now to look at how that affects our decision-making, and we will be responding to the, to the letter in, you know, in due course, and we're not dragging our feet on that. The letter didn't say that a response was needed by a particular time, so we're working through the policy issues. I will say that, as a practical matter, we are not going to have a major treatment plant expansion done by 2025. There's no question about that. We have capital projects that were, that are in process this year and for the next couple of years, that are attempting to squeeze more capacity out of the plant that we have. We're also watching, as we go along, efforts toward water use efficiency. We're happy to work with development projects on the possibility of funding off-site water efficiency improvements to help make a project water-neutral. I guess the one thing that's different for this project is that it might be bumped up ahead in priority over other projects that are, that have other kinds of commitments because of the rules on affordable housing. But I have to note that, at the moment, our treatment plant capacity is less than what we're supposed to have for reliable capacity for our existing customers. So rearranging the priority among new applicants isn't necessarily the solution to the problem. But with that being said, we're working as hard as we can to answer the questions and get that resolved, but I cannot say that the commitment to serve is imminent, but we are working on it as hard as we can, and we're happy to continue to be cooperative.
The, when the Jackson Rancheria apartments were built, were they required to show a well-serve letter from the water agency? Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware.
I would doubt it, but it would be interesting to know that. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, sir.
And if there are other questions later, I apologize, I have to leave, I have another commitment, but I'm happy to answer any questions anytime.
Well, I think you know now that the response to that letter would be better quicker rather than slower.
I do, thank you.
Chuck? So we're, right now, we're just at a standstill?
We're going through the various processes.
The well-serve, I might ask the Danco staff, was the well-serve from the water agency one issue, and is a well-serve for sewer capacity another, from City of Sutter Creek?
Yes, they're, they're, this is Chris Dart. They, we both, we need a capacity letter for both. The, it's our understanding, the City of Sutter Creek won't issue a capacity letter for sewer until the point in time in which they've approved the site plan. It's kind of, they have a condition to approve the site plan for a will-serve letter, but then, I think we were told that they won't issue one until the site plan's approved. A little real clear on that.
Well, I guess it's more in Danco's hands than anyone to push, and pushing usually means you bring the suits in, the lawyers. I don't think that's the desirable outcome. I think we're all trying to do something for the betterment of the people that are affected and betterment of the county. At this point, we're, have we addressed every point today, Melissa?
I think the only other thing was for the MOU. In order for us to move forward, we would need to get the MOU approved as well.
Okay. I'm going to ask for any public comment before we go ahead and take that action. I think many of us have had these conversations with the powers-to-be from Sutter Creek, and we're not trying to force anything on them, just like any other city, but every, everybody, the county, the cities, all play a part in the solution here, so it's a little bit distressing to see the pushback. I think it is pushback, clearly.
I found it shocking they didn't know that that project was affordable housing. I mean, come on.
So, we have approval of the MOU that's required between Amador County Behavioral Health Services, Danco Communities, and Danco Property Management.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the MOU. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, most carries. I think we're going to have to start pushing a little bit, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Danco represented us, too.
Thank you for your support, we appreciate it.
All right, we're going to take about a 10-minute break and come back to our other carrying, which should be very quick, and then back onto our regular agenda. other carrying, which should be very quick, and then back onto our, our regular agenda. To order, go to our public hearing. Surveying Department, public hearing and adoption of the resolution approving the abandonment of a public utility easement in relation to the boundary line adjustment as requested by Frederick and Frederick and Wagstaff and Wagstaff. Property was involved in said abandonment and boundary line adjustment is off North Star Court and will add and exchange area to accommodate a building addition and setback. Mr. Piddell, morning.
Good morning, I'm Roger Piddell, County Surveyor, and this is a rather straightforward minor boundary line adjustment and as you can see between the before and after, if you have that in your package, I hope, that they moved the northerly line of the parcel A3 a little bit north to accommodate an expansion of a leach field. And so what they've done is they've added a private easement along that strip just to make up for the change. And we've had no comments and I recommend approval.
Okay. Any board questions before we open? Then we'll open the public hearing. Are there any public comments? There are none, board?
Moved to closed public hearing.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded closed public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose, most carries. Board action?
I'll make a motion then to adopt the resolution approving the abandonment of the public utility easement in relation to the boundary line adjustment for the Fredericks and the Wagstuffs and the property involved in said abandonment and boundary line adjustment.
I'll second that.
So those are the resolutions of approval and acceptance, correct?
Correct.
All right. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, most carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
All right, we'll go back to our regular agenda item, 5C, discussing a possible action relative to the emergency preparedness and policy update.
Did you say C or E?
5E, excuse me.
Okay.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
So we will give you a presentation on the emergency operations plan. I just want to start off with, this is about a 18th, 18 month process of when I first took over for sheriff and we decided we needed obviously to update our closely outdated emergency operations plan. We wanted to do it in a, a way that went above and beyond just getting a cookie cutter type emergency operations plan, which would have been easily done. So this process took that, that long and I want to give some credit to the OES Coordinator, Sergeant Jeff Villotti, who took an exorbitant amount of time on writing the RFP that went out and did such a good job on that, that it is being modeled throughout the state based on what we are doing above and beyond just an emergency operations plan. And we picked a consultant and he will be given a presentation today, but I also want to highlight the fact that in two days, the state of California has had a requirement of an integrated preparedness plan for 2023 all the way to 2025. That is due in two days. We are going to be the only county that is turning that plan on, plan in on time and it is in a very extensive, well-written plan that we will be turning in. So with that, I will turn it over to our consultant, Mr. Paul Bockrath.
Thank you. Morning.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, the Amador community, both present and virtually. My name is Paul Bockrath. I'm with Preparative Consulting and it's an honor and privilege to be here with you this morning and I thank you for the opportunity to work with this community. Preparative Consulting is an emergency management and public safety consulting business. Thank you, sir. We, we do planning, training exercises, and we organize and equip cities and counties, special districts throughout the state to respond to, prepare for, and recover from all hazards, incidents, emergencies and disasters. I have over 35 years of public safety and emergency management experience. I started my career in public safety, graduating from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I worked for a municipal police department in LA County for a number of years and during that time, I had my first opportunity to engage in emergency management. I was part of a multi-jurisdictional strike team for the riots in 1992. We were in Lawndale, Inglewood and Hawthorne and that experience and a lot of my emergency management really drove me to have a passion for emergency management. In 1993, I moved to Northern California. It's always been a dream. I've loved the Sierra Nevada area and I spent my youth hiking in these mountains and spending time up here. This is my happy place. So I moved up here. I, I moved to a rural area. I live in a rural area of Northern California, just outside the Bay Area, and I want to work for a northeast Bay Area county. I rose to the rank of deputy police chief, so I had the opportunity to work across jurisdictions and, and work with government. During that time, I continued my passion for emergency management. I had the opportunity to work a number of different assignments to include writing plans, doing training, working with the county for emergency management, all the way back on, at the advent of this standardized emergency management system. I had the opportunity to, after 9/11, to work with the county, develop our mobile field force, to develop our terrorism working group and to run exercises and do training for the county, including in a full-scale exercise involving 500 first responders from across the county and throughout the Bay Area. When I retired, and also during that time, I had the opportunity to work a number of incidents. I was an incident commander on three major multi-jurisdictional incidents, including the murder of an elected official, where we had state, local and federal law enforcement, over 100 federal, state, local law enforcement agencies and involved in that multi-state task force for that incident that we did solve. When I retired from law enforcement, I, I really enjoyed the collaborative nature of emergency management and working to solve some of the big issues. I spent two years back in DC and with, in Emmitsburg, Maryland, at the National Emergency Training Center. I became a master exercise practitioner for FEMA and I became one of only three master trainers in the nation. I was hired by Cal OES, the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, to deliver training. They contract with me through my business because I retired in PERS, I can't go back and work for another PERS agency, so they contract with me to deliver training across the state. I'm one of the lead instructors, I train the State Operations Center folks and I also train throughout the state on behalf of the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. And they also allow me to be an outreach instructor, which means through my business, I can partner with counties like yourself and divide or deliver training directly to you in that capacity. I'm a instructor for the FEMA Basic Academy for Emergency Management and a graduate of the Advanced Academy. But one of the things that has really helped me as an emergency manager is responding to rural disasters. And through the state, they've deployed me on a number of major wildfires throughout the state to assist local jurisdictions and through contract with those other counties that I partner with in the Sierra Nevada region, I've responded to a number of major wildfires and assisted those jurisdictions through that. And, and that has allowed me to work with them, to build their program, very much like we plan to do here in Almandore County, to enhance your program. You already have an excellent program here and we're here to enhance your efforts and work with your community to do that. One other thing that I was involved in is the Orville Dam Incident, where the state brought me in to run that on behalf of the Department of Water Resources, where I ran that incident and trained them as well. But the reason why I'm passionate about working for Amador is I live very close to here, I have family in the area, I spend a lot of time up here for recreation, but I, I really have a passion for this region because I know it so well and I live in an area very similar to this. I live rural, I live on a gravel road, I have septic, I have a well, my own well, we talk about water issues, and I live on propane. My neighborhood looks like this, it's rolling grasslands with oak trees. And I've had to contend with disasters before in my home. I teach hazard mitigation for the state, so I better be good at it. I've, I've lived through floods where my neighbors have flooded and I've been able to manage that flood and I've also been involved in fires. October 19th, 2020, I was sleeping at 2:00 AM when the power went out at our house. My wife woke me up, said the power's out, what's going on? I get up and I look out the window and a half mile from my house, the hillside's on fire. So we had already planned for this. I teach planning, I teach mitigation, we had our go bags. Woke my family up, my daughter was visiting, she had her go bag, we grabbed our go bags, we grabbed our pets, I got on the phone with my neighbors, woke them up, some of them have disabilities and needed additional assistance, we made sure we addressed that, grabbed our laptops, grabbed- We made sure we addressed that, grabbed our laptops, grabbed our jewelry, dumped my wife's jewelry in the bag. We had everything ready to go. We grabbed it, threw it in my truck, and we were out of there in a few minutes. As we were leaving, my neighbors' homes were on fire, so it had already reached us in a matter of minutes, and fire resources were arriving on scene. We evacuated, and we rallied with our neighbors at Lowe's, uh, because that's a big parking lot that I know well. So we went there and we made plans for what we were going to do. We ended up being out of our house for about a week. Fortunately for me, I did have good mitigation. Thankfully, I had enough acreage to do that. And my neighbors' homes burned down, but I was okay and stopped all the forward progress moving east. While we were watching that, they were broadcasting from the corner of my house that the entire neighborhood had been wiped out. Well, that didn't turn out to be the case, because we were okay and everybody east of us was okay. The reason I share that story with you is because, um, this is something I know well. I know this region. Fire burns in my neighborhood every year, just like you guys have small fires here and throughout the state. Uh, I'm familiar with fighting them. I fought them with my neighbor, driving a tractor and a pressure washer, waiting for resources to get here. And I've evacuated, so I know the stress and trauma that can come with that. I've been fortunate. My house didn't burn down, but I am prepared. So what that's done is that has informed my feeling that Preparedness is the key to success. And it's a real honor to work with a group of individuals. I take it serious, that already have a, a strong response posture. And what my role here is to bring the whole community together, to engage all the county departments, to talk about what their role is to support police and fire in these emergencies, and how we can all work together and come up with one singular organized plan that we can execute. I do this all the time. I've done it across the state. And those agencies I work with have developed best practices that we now teach all over the state. In fact, next week, I'm teaching at the State Operations Center, and they're bringing a contingent from Taiwan to see us and what we do.
They're going to need a contingency plan if they're ever attacked by China.
Yeah, well, that, that's true. That's true. But for disasters, they just had a, a big earthquake, and, and that's what they're doing, but you're absolutely right, sir. So, that brings me to what we're doing here today, uh, and this partnership that we have. And this partnership involves five elements. The update to the Emergency Operations Plan, which I will briefly go through for you right now, to, um, ensure that we are providing the training that we need, both the mandated training from the state and federal government, and then what training are, is the guidelines that's going to well prepare all of us to respond together as a community. Then we're going to develop a primary and alternate EOC. We, we have that in place. We're going to find what's the best way to centrally locate and organize to support, uh, the incident command posts and police and fire in the field. And then we're going to develop that multi-year integrated Preparedness Plan that the sheriff just spoke about. And then we're going to design and deliver a series of exercises. We'll do a discussion, then we'll do an activation of our EOC and simulate that. I did that for Mariposa County, and two weeks later, they had a fire in that same area. And this was their second team, so we took all the people who had never done it before. We trained them. We put them in there. Two weeks later, the creek fire occurred. It behaved exactly like we predicted, and they were able to get on top of it very quickly. So Preparedness is the key to success, and that's what we want to talk about here today. So, um, if we could go to the next slide? Oh, that's right. I'm, I'm in control. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
You might be.
I might be. I'm never as in control as I think I am.
Well, I think you need to point to the thing up there. There you go.
There we go. Thank you, sir. Alright, so I just wanted to appreciate the introduction from the sheriff. Uh, again, I have spoken probably at length too, too long about myself. The Emergency Operations Plan, uh, addresses the county's planned response to extraordinary emergency situations associated with natural, technological, and, uh, human-caused emergencies, disasters affecting the county. So that means that we're looking at these large-scale events. We're not looking at the, the day-to-day things that the Sheriff's and Fire Department are working on. These are those big jur- these are these big incidents that require a whole community response to those disasters. And we're going to follow a, a structured program. We're required to have certain elements in the plan. And there are laws that govern that, both from the federal government and the state government. So we're going to use the Comprehensive Preparedness Guide to guide our planning process. We're going to use the crosswalk from Cal OES to make sure that we are looking at all of the elements and that it's a comprehensive plan. This is something that Cal OES is now auditing, uh, the various states throughout the county. And some of your neighboring jurisdictions, I'm working with them, uh, on a, on a response to the crosswalk and update. So, it's something that's coming. The state's starting to audit it, so we want to make sure we get in front of it. And I applaud the Sheriff's Department and OES for taking the initiative to get in front of that audit. The state's audit from December of twenty nineteen, where they looked at the response from Butte County, from Sonoma County, and from Ventura County for their response to some disasters. And then finally, we're going to use the project approach and, and steps in the timeline that I'm going to discuss with you. These are the guidance documents that we're going to follow to make sure that we're meeting all of those state and federal mandates, which includes dealing with people with access and functional needs. And this is a, a passion that I have, because, um, when we look at responding to a disaster and having been through a disaster where I watched my neighbors burn down, I understand and appreciate the stress of going through that, how much Preparedness is involved, and how we as neighbors need to help each other. Because when we look at who dies during these disasters, it's the older community. It's people with disabilities, people with access and functional needs. And we want to make sure that we're taking care of, uh, those people among us. That, that's our requirement as government. And we want to engage those people and make sure that they come up with their own Preparedness Plan for themselves, so that they have neighbors that can assist them and is aware of what they need, like I experienced in my own community. And I think you guys are well on your way, uh, doing that. You have some great partners here in the community. I look forward to working with them. So here's our approach. We're going to take a six-step approach to this. We're going to define the project, talk about what's involved and who's involved. We're going to build a core planning team and a collaborative planning team. I'm going to get into a little bit more detail later, but that core planning team's a handful of people that's going to work with me in the Office of Emergency Services, and we're going to write the plan. We're going to take feedback from everybody in the whole community, and we're going to dial in a, a plan that takes into account what resources we have, what capabilities we have, and how we can effectively respond to any disaster that may confront us. Then we have a collaborative team. This is where we're going to cast a wide net. We're going to engage the whole community. We're going to ask people to step forward with good ideas, like Mr. Christensen, who was up here earlier, had some great ideas. People like that, that are invested in the neighborhood, that know this neighborhood intimately. Those are the folks we want to involve to help us make sure we're on the right track and that we're considering the needs of everybody in this community. So, those are the two teams. The collaborative team's going to inform the core team, and we're going to get it done. We're going to look at the threats and hazards that are unique to this county. Every community's different. There's a lot of, uh, hazards that overlap, but every community's different. We're going to look at what those are for this community and begin to plan for them. We're going to review existing and analyze existing plans, policies, and agreements. We've already done some great things here. We've got some great partnerships in this community through mutual aid and MOUs and, and, and other processes. We're going to look at all of those, see what we have in place, and do a gap analysis. What are we missing? Who else can we bring in as a capability or a resource to help us and partner with us, so that we're well prepared to respond? Then we're going to write the plan. We're going to take all that information. We're going to go through it. I'm going to show you an outline. Going to write that plan, draft that plan, get it out to that core planning, uh, team, and, and make sure they don't have any feedback for us. Make sure, uh, that we haven't missed anything, a- and get eyes on it and say, "We can support this plan." Once we do that, we'll review and revise it. We'll get it out to the board here for review. We'll have the planning committee sign off on it, and then get your final approval. Because this is the committee here who's tasked with making sure that, uh, we support the, uh, Office of Emergency Services, and, and we want your commitment, uh, and buy-in for this plan. So then, once we have the plan finalized and approved by this board, then we'll go out and we'll exercise it, and we'll train to, to respond to that plan. This is what the timeline's going to look like. Uh, we're going to start by putting that team together. We've already started that process. We've met with the department heads. We got commitment and buy-in from them. We're going to start reaching out to everyone in the community and put together that core and collaborative team. And then we're going to work through. It's a twelve-month process. The arrows give us an idea of best-case scenario, worst-case scenario. So anywhere on that sliding scale, we could get it done. Potentially, we could do it in eight months or twelve months. Uh, depends on how much commitment we have and, and how much feedback we get from folks. Alright, so what does the outline look like? It's going to look like this. Um, this is some structural to it that's required by law. We're going to talk about how it's organized, commitment from the board for the plan, how we're going to maintain the plan, how we're going to keep the plan updated, uh, and keep the community engaged. Then the base plan is going to look at the overview, how we continue to run operations during an emergency, continuity of government, how the EOC will run, uh, how we will, uh, engage in training, planning, and use of the standardized Emergency Management System and the National Incident Management System. This is a requirement for funding. If we want to get reimbursed for our response costs, these are the things that we need to do. Alright, then we're going to look at positions within the EOC, detailed plans for that, our emergency support functions. We're going to look at the hazards and plan for those. And then we're going to have functional annexes. The law requires that we plan for people with disabilities and access and functional needs in the area of alert and warning, evacuation, and mass care. So how do we let people know they need to evacuate? How do we get them out of, out of the way, out of harm's way? And then where do we put them until it's safe to return home? So we're going to have detailed plans on how we do that. We're going to talk about disaster service worker volunteers, how we can engage the whole community and go through a process whereby they're covered under the state's insurance plan, not ours, and, and we can still use those folks to help us during a disaster. So how do we get our community involved, uh, to help take care of, uh, each other? Then we'll have appendices that support that. So the role of the two plans is the core planning team, as I described, a small team representing the folks that write it. The collaborative team is a wide net of people with technical, uh, and subject matter expertise that can help us. Those advocates for different groups in our community who know them and can present their needs and help us come up with solutions on how to, uh, work with them. So how are we going to format this? We're going to have small meetings where we can bring in those people. We'll do them both in-person and virtually, so that we keep it to one or two hours and have just those subject matter experts come in and meet with us, um, on certain areas. So we're going to build working groups, uh, public alert, warning, evacuation, mass care, recovery, and debris management. We'll have small meetings there, and that will inform the core planning team to write the broader, uh, plans. So that's how we're going to get organized for this. That's our strategy. I've done it a number of times very successfully in communities just like this throughout the Sierra Nevada, the, the foothills, um, the mountain area, and the gold, uh, country. So, something I know well. It's something that I'm excited about, and, and it's an honor to work with this community. So thank you for this opportunity. The next step would be to engage the whole community, get buy-in for those core and collaborative teams, and to have a kickoff meeting, uh, where we can, uh, get this done. So, any questions that this group may have for me?
I, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Does this plan include, um, how to deal with mass shootings?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, uh, when we look at, uh, different types of hazards, we have natural hazards, fire, flood, earthquake, those things naturally that occur. Then we have technological, uh, hazardous material spills, uh, cyber hacking, uh, bridge or dam, uh, failure. And then we have human cost, and that would be, um, active shooters, terrorist incidents, uh, things of that nature. So we will, yes, sir, address active shooters as a component of this.
Any other questions from the board?
So what is the, the next step here is, uh, you're going to begin this when? Or are we, uh, do we, are we making a motion today on any of this, or is this informational?
Well, let's see. It's a pleasure of the board, so I would imagine there's some, it says an update. Sheriff?
So at, uh, at this point, it's just informational. Uh, we wanted to present, you know, where we're at, uh, at this time and what the plan is going to entail. And, uh, like, uh, Paul said, I've already reached out to the department heads within the, uh, the county and already have their buy-in, and that was the initial start of this plan. And then we will be going into the community engagement. And really, a, the Emergency Operations Plan is the function of government. Uh, it's not just the emergency opera, or OES, Emergency Operations of, of, of the Sheriff's Office. It's the entire government and county's responsibility. Um, so that's why we're bringing all the stakeholders in and also the community involvement.
Yes, I have a question. Um, who's responsible for preparing the plan?
It's actually the county. Um, and there is money set aside, uh, by the county for, uh, the Emergency Operations Plan. We, we take the lead role on this, but it's, it's actually the County of Amador that's respons- responsible for, for this plan.
So it's not, it's not an OES function?
OES falls under the county. So, it, uh, it is a county function. That's why we're including everybody in this function. We take the lead on it.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, with the guy, with the guidelines, I think it talks about OES in there.
The authority under OES is granted to, to me by the County of Amador.
It, OES doesn't have to be under the sheriff, right?
Okay.
Correct.
When was the plan, um, last done? Our original plan, when was it put in place?
Probably over a decade.
You don't really have a number on it then?
No, I don't.
Somebody told me it's nineteen ninety-eight. It's like, wow, that's a long time ago.
Yes. Like I said, we're, we're sorely overdue.
And once we update it, how long is it good for?
Uh, I believe five years, and then we have to continually do the update, which is built into this. And like I said, we, we didn't just want a cookie cutter plan. Uh, we're going above and beyond what is even required by, uh, the federal government and the state government. So all of this training, all the Emergency Operations Center, all this collaborative effort, uh, is really what's driving this, for us to go above and beyond, because it falls within my vision and the mission of the Sheriff's Office. The money that was set aside was about eighty thousand dollars for, for the Emergency Operations Plan to get that funded. And I can tell you, this project is over twice that. I'm absorbing it because I believe it's one necessary and sorely needed that it will take us to the next level.
Is there a state recommendation on how often they should be, um, updated?
I'll let Paul answer that.
Yes, the, the, the guidelines is to review the plan every time you activate for an emergency, just to see that the plan's worked. Five years is the guidelines to revise the plan. Um, it's, it's, it's not mandated. It's a guideline because it's an unfunded mandate. So the guideline is the state wants to see it done every five years, but since the state doesn't directly fund it, they indirectly fund it through Emergency Management Preparedness Grants and through response funding. But the law does require under, um, eighty-six oh seven of the government code that we plan for training and use the standardized Emergency Management System. So it's required of each disaster council, which the, the County of Amador has a disaster council in place as of nineteen fifty. So, uh, you are required as conditions of a disaster council to have a plan.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
And having a plan, does this elevate you as far as reimbursement or anything like that, or give you more points?
Yes, sir. A- absolutely. So it's a, a requirement for response, and under the government code, it says- So it's a requirement for response, and under the government code, it says that in order to be eligible for reimbursement funding from the state, you must plan for training and use the standardized emergency management system. If you receive federal money in any form, which every government does, then you're required to plan for training and use the national incident management system. So by having this in place, if we have a disaster and we submit response costs, if we get a state declarat, or proclamation of emergency and a presidential declaration of major disaster or emergency, we're eligible for reimbursement up to 75% from the federal government and 18.75% from the state under the California Disaster Assistance Act. That means that we're only paying 6.25% of that response, but this is a condition of getting that, those money.
I think it's good it's being updated because it's, you look at our neighbors and they've all been roughed up and I hope we're not, I hope we're not following suit.
I think honestly, because I've been with your neighbors during those roughed-up years, and it's pretty traumatic. There's been a lot of people that died. My neighborhood lost 100 homes, killed four people. So I've been there, I've worked through the Detwiler Fire with Mariposa. We were doing the same thing. When that fire hit, we evacuated the entire county of Mariposa and sheltered them in Madera, Merced, and Toowalemie. We did that through a multi-agency coordination group where our partnering counties worked with them to take care of them. When COVID hit, I worked 150 operational area days with different counties throughout the Sierra Nevada because that's, those are my people, that's my passion. I put together with Mariposa County a five-county and Yosemite National Park multi-agency coordination group for COVID so we could share resources and get the response from the state that we needed because individually, we're small counties, but together, we're a force to be reckoned with. That's been up for two years now. We tried to disband it or demobilize, nobody will let go, and it's actually a great thing. And now, we've used it through a number of fires, and it really gives us that collaborative nature. So I work with these counties, they're all struggling to update their plans, and I'm the one writing most of them in this region. So that helps us get coordinated, and so when we do respond, we've worked together. It's not our first time, and it's seamless. So I'm excited to be part of this project. I love this area, and I'm honored that you're giving me this opportunity.
You just got to make sure when you're cutting pace, you don't put Alameda in there.
Yeah, you know, I've worked with Alameda, and I'm thinking, why is Alameda coming down here? But, you know, whatever. Yeah, no, I'm a little more careful than that. I don't cut and paste. Everything's written. You'll see the 61-page plan that, that's all original, original work, so.
You know, one more thing I would say, I do like that your part of the plan is going to be requesting community input. Because a couple of things come to mind. I know when you had the, well, the Fire in Paradise.
Paradise, yeah.
Paradise Fire.
Yeah, the campfire.
Yep. Previous to that, I guess, the town was having an issue of some people getting hit on occasion in, on one of the, one of the main streets, and they decided that they would go and reduce that street from two, or like, two lanes each direction down to one lane. And everybody said, what a great idea it was. And one elderly lady says, you know, we've had fires here before, and we may need to evacuate, and nobody, nobody even considered that, and that lady was right. And, pardon?
You're right.
And what else I was thinking about, when I was watching 60 Minutes, all the little part they did on the Caledore Fire, I saw something made me almost want to cry. They had a picture of a washed-out road with a culvert laying there. And 10 years ago, I called up the forest service, I went down that road, used to run cattle in that area. And I thought, gosh, this road's really a good access road to get down that canyon if you have a fire, and it's getting overgrown, it's getting washed out. You could barely make it to pickup at that time. And I called them a couple of times, and I thought, and they talked about, the road was washed out, they got down there, got, equipment got stuck, couldn't get out, it kind of was a real problem, couldn't access the fire. So I think having local input, a lot of times, locals have an idea kind of what they need, what issues are. So I think that'd be a real good thing.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, sir, and I couldn't agree more. The first thing I did when I bought my property in the county of five acres, the first thing I did is go to all the neighbors and ask them, what does this look like? What are the things I need to be concerned with? And they said, that area floods like crazy and we all flood. And I thought, okay, well, what can I do about it? I got a small property grant from the county and cut a ditch through my property and rerouted it with a swell out to the creek because there's a major creek that runs behind the property, and never flooded again. And it saved all those homes, and now, they come every year and they do a tour of that. So you're right, what you described with paradise is absolutely true. I was actually teaching the state operations center, running an exercise when that fire occurred and was in those initial meetings with the governor for that. And, you know, I'll never, I'll never forget the sounds and the description of what was occurring in those initial moments. I mean, just professionals screaming, a lot of people lost their lives. Planning is the key to success, and that, and they should have had multiple routes, and that's something that we'll consider. And as we look at our hazard mitigation plan as well, I just wrote one for Calaveras County and working with them as well, and those are the things, maintaining those evacuation routes is critical.
We better try and wrap this up. We've been on it for a while, so I'll ask for any public comments. And hearing none.
We have someone on Zoom.
On Zoom.
Go ahead, Cindy, when you're ready.
Good morning, Stell. My name is Cindy Grandboy. I'm a county resident, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board and to thank the sheriff's office for taking preparedness so seriously. I mean, we all know, we live in a high-fire risk area. I don't believe the 88 corridor has had a fire in, what, like 75, 100 years? Anything can happen, but it's more than fire. You know, we've had big snowstorms, other things can happen. Really, truly, thank you for taking this seriously and supervisor O'Netto, I appreciate your remarks about the local input. I think it is extremely important. Nobody knows an area better than somebody who has lived there 30, 40 more years. I live in an area that I'm concerned about because I've discussed it before, there is one way in, there is one way out, and it is a narrow, windy road, and if a fire breaks out, I have genuine concerns that lives are going to be lost. So I'll wrap it up again by just saying thank you. I appreciate the super, super important attention you're paying to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom? No? All right, Sheriff and Sir, thank you very much for presentation. Look forward to the process commencing, and hopefully, we'll all be involved. Any last words? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
We will continue to move on to item 5F, General Services Administration Sierra Business Council Presentation for Civic Speak Fellowship. Morning, Mr. Hopkins.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Hopkins, General Services Director. Yes, we have a brief presentation from Sierra Business Council. I believe Meredith Anderson is on board. I see her up there. This program is funded through the Sierra Nevada Energy Watch Program. It's a fellowship program. There's really nothing, it's a benefit to us and General Services. Amanda can talk about it. I think the only action needed for this is just that you authorize that participation agreement for me to execute, and we'll move on, but I'll turn it over to Meredith right now.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. Great, I can share my screen as well. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Good morning, supervisors. Thank you for having us today. My name is Meredith Anderson, and I am a project manager on Sierra Business Council's climate and energy team. And I have with me, have with me Tallulah Pelisir Lloyd, who is our Civic Spark Fellow for the 2022-2023 service term. And we're looking forward to telling you more about what Tallulah will be working on this year for Amador County under the Sierra Nevada Energy Watch Program. First, I'll introduce our Civic Spark Fellow, who will be working with Amador County. Then, I'll give an overview of what the Civic Spark Program does. Next, I'll give a little bit more detail into the Sierra Nevada Energy Watch Program. This is the program that's providing the funding for the Civic Spark Fellow. And then, I will go through our fellow's work plan for the 2022-2023 service year. And then, finally, I can answer any questions you may have. So like I said, my name is Meredith Anderson, and I'm a project manager on the climate and energy team at Sierra Business Council, and I'm also the site supervisor for the Civic Spark Fellow. And I'll have Tallulah introduce herself, if she can unmute. Oh, I don't think she can unmute.
We're working on it right now.
All right. Thank you. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, my name's Tallulah Pelisir Lloyd. I'm from Oakland, and I just graduated college. I went to Grinnell College in Iowa, actually, and I studied economics and biology with an interest in environmental issues and energy efficiency. And I'm really excited to have this opportunity to work with Amador County on their, on your energy efficiency goals and track your solar panels.
Thank you, Tallulah. All right, so a little overview of the Civic Spark Program. It is a governor's initiative AmeriCorps program that was dedicated to building capacity for local governments to address emerging environmental and social equity resilience challenges such as climate change, water resource management, affordable housing, and mobility. The Civic Spark Program is administered by CivicWell, which is formerly the Local Government Commission. Sierra Business Council Fellow will be focused on working with Amador County on energy-related projects, and I'll get more into what those projects look like in a couple of minutes. This fellowship is through the Sierra Business Council's Sierra Nevada Energy Watch Program, and the service term will be from September 2022 to August 2023, so 11 months in total. The Sierra Nevada Energy Watch Program expands energy efficiency and renewable energy use in the Sierra, empowers local action, eliminates barriers to a clean energy future, establishes climate resiliency, and helps to save communities a lot of money. Our programs increase the capacity of the public sector to identify energy efficiency projects, take advantage of financing opportunities, and implement on-the-ground money-saving and energy-saving projects. So we will be supporting Amador County with all of this. Here are some of the things that Tallulah will be working on this year for Amador County. So looking at energy efficiency and resilience opportunities to save energy and money, energy outreach and education, energy action plan tracking for the EAP that was developed for Amador County in 2019, facility benchmarking to kind of track your progress with energy usage, to track the solar generation, and do a cost-benefit analysis to make sure that saving the county money, EV charging research for charging infrastructure and fleet conversion, and potentially some staff training. And Tallulah's main point of contact at the county for all of this will be John Hopkins in the General Services. So now, I will open it up for any questions you might have.
Any questions, board members? Supervisor Brown.
Yeah, this is Supervisor Brown. Are we going to be doing as a county a public side of coordination, you know, between AWA, the county, any other public entities as far as like EV charging and EV conversion?
That's something that we haven't talked about yet, but can definitely be looked into to kind of collaborate between public agencies and the county.
Sounds good.
I have a question from the Chair, Supervisor Forster, and John, you might chime in on this too, but the county's already done some solar implementation on this building, and now, the shade structures, and we've done EV charging stations through the air district. So will this supplement those activities?
It supplements it and will also confirm that what we're saving, we're actually saving. It's also weeding through the very complicated process of identifying and understanding our PG&E bills. There's a lot of, a lot of Greek to those bills, and they're going to help us with that as well, as well as hopefully, maybe get EV chargers installed.
Well, what did, a recent report came out and said we're like 40,000 EV charging stations short of what we need in California.
I got one question, though. If we, if we put them in to utilize them, does that mean the lights go out?
No.
I'm talking statewide. Remember the governor saying, don't charge your cars and?
Right.
So until they get some, start getting some more battery backup, maybe a little more generation, they, they got a little problem there.
Yeah, they do. Saving energy is a good thing. It saves money, and, but I'm right there with you. I'm not all on board totally with the EV chargers or batteries alone. I'm more of a hydrogen guy anyway, so.
Well, don't we have that ability right now to document what, how much we're generating through our system?
Sort of, and we still need that one-year completion, which will end, I believe, the end of this year to, able to analyze that better.
Because our recent installation of solar, didn't they do an analysis of the whole county?
They did, and SiteLogic will be coming back sometime after the first of the year to give a report on that, as well as, we have the intern to check that, as well as work through the PG&E process and what those bills mean and how we're actually truly saving any money.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
I do, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Any supervisors.
Yeah, John, is this going to be just for the county or is it going to be also for private, you know?
It's just for the county.
Just for the county, okay. But the charging stations would be for private individuals, correct?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't got that far, but yeah, it would be for anybody that needs to charge a vehicle.
Okay, but they would be located on county facilities?
Yeah.
Property?
Yeah. Any public comment? Anyone on Zoom? All right, Ms. Anderson, we're going to take action here, but we appreciate you making the presentation today. Looking forward to working with you with our General Services Department.
I'll make a motion then to approve the Sierra Nevada Energy Watch Program participation agreement and authorize General Services Director to execute the agreement.
Agreed.
Moved and seconded. Any final comments from you, Ms. Anderson?
I'd just say thank you again for having us present, and we're looking forward to working with the county on its energy needs.
All right, thank you, John. Any parting words? You got the next item.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose. Most carries. Thank you. And we'll go on to item 5G, Presentation of Central Sierra Economic Development District's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs.
So as you know, we completed our SEDs last year. The SED stands for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Shortly after we completed that, the Central Sierra Economic Development District wanted to develop their own SEDs, and they've done that and completed it, and Vicky Dahl is here to give that presentation. And just a reminder to the general public, the Central Sierra Economic Development District includes five counties. Ours is one, and so she's going to present this to you guys today.
Okay.
I think so. She should be. I hope so.
Her name?
Vicky Dahl. The gal you emailed.
Okay, I'm here.
Yep, we got you.
Got everything on and unmuted, so. Okay, so John, are you handling the slides or shall I share my screen?
Feel free to share your screen.
Okay, we'll do it. Okay.
There we are.
There you go.
Can we make that, can you make it full screen? There we go.
There. Okay, so thank you again. As John said, my name is Vicky Dahl. I am with Chabin Concepts. And myself and Paul McGlafman from F. Chabon McGlafman Associates were two that worked on the Amador County SEDs. And we are now joined with the North State Planning and Development Collective at Chico State University, working on the Central Sierra Economic Development District SEDs. And the Central Sierra District has had a SEDs at least since 2017. And this would be their five-year update. EDA requires every five years districts, federally funded districts, update their SEDs every five years. So this is the process that we are in now. So again, I know that a lot of you are aware of what the SEDs is. It's a five-year strategy. It's this particular one because it is a five-county, two-city jurisdiction. It's a very regional focus. And we have heard from a lot of other presenters and from today about other plans that are in the works or in the plan. And these were all the types of reports and studies and plans that will be, if not incorporated into this SEDs, be referenced in the SEDs. So hopefully what we are able to come up with and publish will be able to help inform the local plans that are taking place. And the other, because it is a regional plan, it's intended to be implemented through collaborative efforts. And we've heard of several of those today as well. It's not for any one jurisdiction to take on. It's not for the Economic Development District to take on or any individual agency necessarily. But hopefully it'll be a very collaborative effort because resources aren't tight, as I know you are all well aware of. So hopefully the things will be accomplished through collaborative efforts. So this is where we are, timeline. We started this work several months ago doing a lot of the data collection and research. Paul and I have been on the phone and interviewing several both community stakeholders, elected officials, as well as the general populace. We've had an online survey going for the last few months. And we have, several more returns are coming in every day. So we have over 200 that we have heard from so far. And a lot of these issues and items will be incorporated into the final plan because the public engagement, again, is an important issue. And since COVID a couple of years ago, EDA has been supportive of and even encouraged this type of presentation and public input. So we've done, like I said, electronic surveys and Zoom presentations, Zoom town halls, things like that to get that public input. So we expect to have a draft. The strategy is ready sometime in December. There'll be a 30-day public comment period. Then we'll make any revisions that are necessary. It will then be accepted by the Sierra Central District to be submitted to EDA for their 30-day review. This is kind of our process. As I said, it's a very community-informed and asset-based plan. What is it that we have? What assets do you have? What are the challenges? What are the opportunities that are seen? And all of this then feeds into and informs an action plan, which is what would be delivered in December. These are some of the critical issues that we've identified, both through research and through conversations with folks. And I don't think there's anything here that would surprise anyone. The challenge at this point is to identify some strategies that we can hopefully make some progress on some of these challenges, maybe some resources that can help the organizations in the jurisdiction take on some of the action items that will help address some of these issues. And as I said, it's going to be, and it needs to be very much a collaborative effort because I don't think there's any item on this list that is unique to any one in particular county. It really is, they are very regional issues, as well as some regional opportunities such as tourism and small business development and things like that. That is, that's what I have for you so far. It's just a quick update on where we are and where we're headed. I'm happy to take any questions.
Vicky, this is Supervisor Axe. And just for clarification to the board, Amador participated in the SEDs, which actually Chabin, who you represent, performed that. And you're basically going to take that information and fold it into this county or
Yes.
Regional.
Yes.
Plan.
Right. It needs existing plans that are out there, whether they be the SEDs and different strategies and even the emergency preparedness plan that was talked about earlier will be, as best we can incorporate it into the strategies for the actions for this SEDs. At least recognize that they're happening and how they inform and how they coincide with the things that we're proposing for the SEDs.
Vicky, this is Supervisor Forster. I think under regional infrastructure, and this really hasn't, it's been brewing, but it's coming to a head now in communities here where people are losing their wells, having to go deeper. Sometimes they still can't find water. But because of the drought situation for five years, I think under regional infrastructure, access to affordable supply of water might be a good one to add there.
I will do that.
I can tell you like our Amador Water Agency, which has its share of issues to deal with and not enough water, it sounds like. But they're hesitant and most of the time refuse to extend lines down roadways unless there's a big enough mass of people there to justify the expenditure.
Right.
And the return on investment.
Yeah, right. I was listening to the previous report and presentation and realized that there is, and we need to emphasize that in our economic conditions section of this particular SEDs is that there is more really to affordable housing, available housing, and even business development. It's more than just having the housing there. It's having the services and being able to supply additional demand. So it's a multi-pronged problem.
Yeah, Vicky, in addition to water, wastewater treatment is another, kind of goes hand in hand, so to speak. Goes along with that.
Yeah, I agree, but you can, we generate lots of wastewater and waste. It's getting the water is a different matter. So I agree with you, though.
Well, what Richard said is real true. I was talking to an old pump man who worked a lot of pumps in the county. I was talking to him last night and he was talking about old water and new water. And the old water doesn't have isotopes from the nuclear test in 1943. So they can tell how much water is new and how much is old. And yeah, it's, there's probably, if we keep having a prolonged drought, it's going to be a real problem at some point, more than it already is.
Well, I think we have a prolonged drought right now because the water that's been coming is not near enough over the last five years to regenerate the ground tables, even in fractured rock. I mean, it's just not recharging.
Yeah, no, it's a problem. You know, John, do you know any idea how much money the Economic Development Authority has in their pot?
No, I don't. They have, I mean, they have a wide variety of grant opportunities. But no, I have no idea. That money's got an ebb and flow to it.
Yeah. Okay.
While you're talking about broadband, if we could coordinate, so if you're running broadband down, especially if you're doing it underground, you might as well just do water or wastewater facilities too at the same time. And then the county can only have to pave it once, repave it once. Any other board comments? Any public comments? I don't see anyone on Zoom. So the only action here today is just to hear the report, right?
This was just, yeah, this was just an update from the Sierra Central Economic Development District.
Okay, Vicky, any last comments?
No. Again, I really appreciate the time here to update you. And I appreciate everyone that participated in either interviews or in the online survey. And I would expect we'll be doing perhaps another update. At this point, probably close to when the draft strategies would be available.
This SEDs was paid for by a grant too, wasn't it, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dahl. And John, thank you. I think you'll be sticking around for the next item. All right, which will move on to Item 5H, Local Agency Technical Assistance Grant.
Yes, that's AKA LADA. This is LADA grant. When we first looked at it, staff and myself, and I have here in the audience today Jeff White, our IT Director, Karen Warburton, my analyst, as well as we've had several meetings with Volcano Telephone Company. And we didn't originally see much value in this. And we're going to pass on it. Had discussions with our chief over here. And it was basically because a lot of this was based on the CPUC maps for broadband that I knew were inaccurate. I've talked with Comcast, AT&amp;T, and Volcano, and they all agree with that. The ISPs, the internet service providers, could not apply for this funding. And I knew that if they didn't apply for it and couldn't be a part of that process, that these network designs that would be paid for through this program would probably not be used. Because most of those extensions into those unserved or underserved areas would be extensions of those companies. And they have their own proprietary network design engineers on staff. So that was another problem that we had to wrestle with and take into consideration, especially having third-party designers. And we weren't really sure, as I said, if those designs would be used. And in these unserved or underserved areas, didn't know if there was going to be a return on investment. You know, if you are going to expand broadband into an area of 12 people or 30 people and you're going to spend half a million or better to get there, that return on investment was a consideration for us. And then most recently, Volcano was awarded just under a $29 million grant award through USDA to convert all of their copper to fiber. And that's to about 10,000 customers. And that's literally almost a third of the county. So we're in good shape, and we're in good shape where Volcano has spread fiber. So those were the things that we kind of went, yeah, do we really want to get involved with this grant? Barbara Hayes from RCRC is here and she can answer all your questions and we'll talk about this briefly as well. But some of the benefits to wrap up is that I know that the maps that I know that are not accurate, they will get updated. That's a good benefit. So that money will be spent to update some of those maps. We did learn that the ISPs, such as Volcano, can be a silent partner. So even though it's going to be Golden State Authority Connect talking to us, we will talk to Volcano to make sure that those network designs meet their criteria. In addition to that, there is a, we can recoup some of our county admin time for any of this time that's spent. But RCRC is going to do all the heavy lifting. They've got about two years to do this. And the costs that are used to develop any of these network designs will help to eliminate some of those costs. And that was a question with Volcano that we had, and they felt that there was some benefit potentially to that. So.
What you're saying that, John, is maybe if they do all the design work and that cost is done upfront, then it might make it more possible for like Volcano to bring broadband in.
Yes, and to use those designs. So with that, though, Barbara, I see Barbara on the screen and she's intimately knowledgeable with all of this. But by the time we got done talking about Volcano, me reviewing it in depth, Jeff and Karen, we figured that, yeah, okay, there's probably a benefit here. And there's no money, this is a half a million dollar award. You do have to spend the money in order to get reimbursed, but that is going to be handled through RCRC. And Barbara can talk about that. Anyway, I'll turn it over to Barbara.
I don't like a recommendation that's not, yeah, let's go get them. I mean, this one's so
It's
almost a non-committal.
It is, but since there's going to be very little work from us and it will update those maps and there are some of the other positives that I talked about, and RCRC is going to do all the heavy lifting, then I was like, okay.
Okay, as long as we don't have a lot to do because
Yes.
we have plenty to do right now.
Barbara, are you hearing that? We don't have a lot to do. County staff does not have a lot to do.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead. Tell us this is a great program, Barbara.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Barbara Hayes. I'm the Chief Economic Development Officer here at RCRC. And I will say that everything that John mentioned when they were considering whether to go after these LADA funds, a local agency technical assistance fund, was absolutely 100% valid in the absence of the local agency technical assistance fund, which I'll describe in just a second, and future funding opportunities that could provide an infusion of capital for private providers to build fiber first, fiber systems throughout Amador County. So beginning with LADA, local agency technical assistance fund, I'll just hit a couple of highlights that are most relevant for you all this morning. Each individual applicant in the county of Amador is an eligible applicant, as are cities, towns, special districts, COGS, and other local agencies. Each local applicant can receive up to $500,000 to fund 100%, no match required, 100% of identified projects. The CPUC is encouraging, RCRC to encourage our member counties to really focus on network design for these dollars. And as John intimated, and this will go right to the point of how busy you all are and what we can do to help, is we've designed a system that really removes any of the cash flow issues from Amador County. And the cash flow that I'm referring to is that while the program funds 100% of the identified project costs, it does so on a reimbursement basis. So RCRC, through one of our affiliate entities, Golden State Connect Authority, of which Supervisor Anetto is a board member, Golden State Connect Authority will absorb those cash flow issues on Amador County's behalf. So there'll be no out-of-pocket associated with this 100% funded grant. The other thing is, as John mentioned, we'll do, most of the heavy lifting will of course require some county input as far as direction and comment as the plans are developed. Because you all are local and, and you will know if there's a house outside of the map that we're working with that needs to have fiber delivered or connectivity provided. So there, there is an element at, at certain check-in points along the way where we will circle back with your able team there in Amador County for input. But other than that, we will, we being Golden State Connect Authority, an RCRC affiliate, will manage the contractors, pay the contractors, and package all of the supporting documentation that's necessary for grant administration and reimbursement. We will forward those entire packages to the county to push send on to the CPUC to receive reimbursement. And then when those dollars come back, you just pass them back on to Golden State Connect Authority, and we will in turn pay the contractors with whom we have agreements on your behalf. The last thing I'll just touch on, if there's some interest in it, and John and Jeff and Karen and the team are, are aware of this, there is an opportunity, and John intimated, that you could incorporate some administrative costs that could be recouped on behalf of the county. There's 12% of the total grant amount that could, with justification and support, be reimbursed to the county for the time for indirect overhead that's associated with this grant. Although we don't accept there to be very much at all. And I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
We'll hold you to that. We don't expect there to be very much.
So Barbara, this is.
Really don't.
This is Supervisor Axe. So the types of projects we would pursue with this grant would be updating our maps? Anything else that you can think of that we would be doing?
Yeah, the focus of the grant would be for network design. And the further focus of that network design would be identified project areas that include the unserved and underserved areas of Amador County. And John is absolutely correct that the maps that we are working with are abysmal. But that said, they are what the program is based on, and they're what future grant dollars at present will be based on. Now, there's a new map that's supposed to be released by the CPUC. We expect it to be released sometime this fall that will go down to the location. But I, I would just caution everybody to level set your expectations because the same input sources will inform the locational map as currently inform the maps that we are working with. That said, the reason for our focus on those unserved, underserved areas, and part of the process will develop project areas. And a project area will include not only the unserved, underserved area, but it will also include the geography that connects to a middle mile access point, as well as maybe some area that is already served on our way to the unserved, underserved. Because that's just how the infrastructure will work out. But really, the focus is on identifying project areas and developing network design plans, construction-ready network service design, network design, for project areas that include the unserved, underserved areas of Amador County.
So when I took a look at all of that, I, it was kind of on a scale, and I went, well, yeah, there's, there's enough maybe positive here, whether it's the information or the network designs that could benefit the expansion of any broadband in the future. Now Barbara, you, you didn't talk about the timeframe, but there, I think there's two years, but I think they've consolidated that a bit?
Right. So under the LADA program, you have two years. Once your project is approved and officially accepted by the, by the local agency, you have two years to complete your identified project. That said, in the applications that, that we've worked with our member counties to submit, we greatly condense that because we want to get these network designs done as quickly as possible so that they are in hand once future funding sources that providers can access open up for, for application. Because the information that comes out of this network design work funded wholly in part by LADA will inform the financial analysis that the incumbent providers or network administrators will need in order to put together grant applications. Specifically, and, and, and the quickest one that we're looking at coming down at us is the federal fund account slash last mile, which is part of the SB 156 allocation of funding that was made possible by SB 156. And, and I should say before I leave that, I won't go too into the weeds except to say that the dollars were allocated on a county-by-county basis based on the number of unserved, underserved locations identified within each county. And that includes the incorporated areas of the county as well. And then a fixed dollar amount was assigned to each of California's 58 counties based on that analysis. In the case of Amador County, I believe it's at about $57 million that will be available, again, to providers and incumbent, incumbent service providers and network administrators for purposes of directing connectivity to those unserved, underserved areas of, in this case, Amador County. Thus our focus under LADA on network design for those unserved, underserved areas.
So Barbara, this is Supervisor Axe again. So you'll be able to do your project design or analysis on the incorporated areas as well within the county?
Um, well, this application for LADA would specifically be for the unserved, underserved in the unincorporated area.
Okay.
If you do have incorporated areas within Amador County that are interested in pursuing LADA funds for network design, they can each apply for and receive up to $500,000 for network designs for their incorporated area. Under LADA, there's something called an overlapping jurisdiction, and that triggers all kinds of issues. So it's best if, if network designs are done cooperatively but separately by county and then incorporated areas within.
I don't know if they're technically underserved at this time, but they are the, we have five incorporated cities, and they, I think they all have reasonable internet, but they might benefit from, you know, faster internet in the future. And I wouldn't want to ignore them if that, if there's a way for us to get the word to them. But that means contacting five different jurisdictions also.
I, I have contacted to let the cities know.
Okay.
Amateur City, I think. I'm not sure. I think we're, Amateur City, I contacted them or not, or I had a contact for them. But Jackson, Plymouth, and, and Sutter Creek, and I, um.
Any other board comments, questions?
Yeah, I have one. I guess a question I'd have, there's some areas that have either minimal or slow broadband. Like, you know, there's like different communities, River Pine, Shandau Valley, has like dial-up in Fiddletown. By getting the design in place, as far as the LADA funding, wouldn't that maybe help in the future? Some funding sources come along that I might, might be able to get some broadband brought in those areas? It'd be, it'd be basically, because a lot of times, don't these grants want like shovel-ready projects?
Yes. I, I mean, if, I don't want to step on John's toes, and I can't see if he's leaning in or not, but I would say yes, Supervisor. Having these network designs done, they will be construction-level designs. You can begin, you can take these plans and begin deployment with these plans. So yes, having them in place would be helpful for future funding opportunities, most certainly. Or is an interested incumbent service provider who wants to expand, John spoke about Volcano, and you're certainly lucky to have Volcano as a partner in Amador. So having those plans ready for any incumbent service provider to review. If, if somebody, if, and I'll just say AT&amp;T because they're my, my cell provider. But if AT&amp;T were to come knock on the door and say, we're very interested in looking at this unserved, underserved area over here in, I'm making this up, northwest Amador County, have you done any work or any analysis? The fact that the county could then hand them a plan that had a basis with the stated assumptions for them to review, they may tweak it, take it internal and tweak it ever so slightly. But all that being said, there, there'll be good valuable information there.
So Supervisor Anetto, what she's, that was a big consideration, and that's one of the reasons why we, we talked with Volcano several times to see if there was going to be any advantage to this. And that, they felt that there might be an advantage or a tipping point. Because like I said earlier, there also has to be a return on investment. These, these ISPs aren't in business to, for, to perform charity work. They're in business to make money.
Well, you know, that's one of the reasons why the cities have, have a higher population density. And there may be a better return on investment in those areas as opposed to a, you know, a rural road that's 10 miles long and has, you know, a small number of folks on it.
Yeah, unfortunately, most of those areas don't meet that criteria for not served or underserved.
I, I understand, but, um.
Any public comment? Hearing none. Any other board comments? All right, we have a proposed action here.
Sure. Yeah, I'd make a motion to participate in a LADA funding, approve the resolution and the MOU with Golden State Connect Authority.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Barbara, you and I are going to be talking.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, John, are you, I think you got a break on the crop report.
I could give it if you want me to.
Good afternoon, Barry.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors and ladies and gentlemen of the public. My name is Barry Clark. I'm the Deputy Agricultural Commissioner and CEO of Weights and Measures. And I am here today to present to you the 2021 Agricultural and Livestock Report, AKA the Crop Report. I believe you guys have it in front of you. If you wanted to turn the page and look at the Commissioner Mayberry's letter, it reveals that agricultural, the value for agriculture in 2021 was $45,354,851, which is a 15.42% increase from the previous year of 2020, which was $38,363,267. We attribute a majority of this increase to the wine grapes, which was a 34.26% increase. And before you ask me the question, yes, we did have a huge frost this year in April. And those numbers will be captured in the 2022 crop report. We're still in the harvest, so we don't have all those numbers yet.
Probably be some ugly numbers.
Well, we're crossing our fingers that they're not, but it's very possible. But since we're on that subject, on our website, the Agricultural Department, that has been deemed as a natural disaster. And through the Farm Service Agency, you can, the, the growers of the wine grapes can seek some, some help, so.
You mean because of the freeze, it was deemed a disaster? Our department wasn't deemed a disaster?
Correct, I'm sorry. Yes. The disaster was deemed as a disaster. Or the freeze was deemed as a disaster, excuse me. With that being said, back to the report, last year Supervisor Anetto was interested in, in a 10-year comparison. So if you'll turn to page seven, you'll see that that has returned. And then a new piece of the crop report that we've added this year is the Weights and Measures Department has, has put some information in there that shows the numbers of things like, you know, gas pumps and scales and computing scales and dormant scales and livestock scales that we have, that we do throughout the year. I also wanted to point out somebody that is in the audience here, Ms. Casey Newfelt. She's an Ag and Standards Inspector Two at the Department, and she was hugely instrumental in, in creating this report this year. Do you have any questions?
So Barry, the, I guess the, the increase for this year over last year was primarily a value increase? Is that?
Was due to the grapes, yeah.
Grapes. Is that a inflation or just a?
You know, that's a question that I did ask industry, and I, and I, I never did get a, a specific point in which that that increased. One of the growers told me, you know, mother nature has her ways. Grapes really want to produce, and, you know, they did this year, so.
Okay.
That, the unit price is substantially higher. But before people think that ag went and made a whole lot of money this last year, the cost of everything's gone out of sight.
Yep.
So I think the increases in income are probably just about ate up in expenses, be my guess.
I, I certainly wouldn't disagree with you.
I went up just a portion of one day for the big crush, and talking to some of the winemakers, they indicated, yes, it's been a drastic hit on production, but they said the price will be a lot higher for the wine that's purchased.
Well, let's, let's, let's hope that helps out.
It might. But I think Ms. LeBancle pointed out that being on a chattel had like a 60 or 70% hit on their, on their crop because of the freeze.
Some of them were that, that low, yeah.
I got an off-the-wall question. Supervisor Brown, under the Weights and Measurements, monorail?
It's a monorail scale. It's a, a, a cut and, cut and wrap location for me.
Oh, okay.
Um, I, I believe that one's actually down at Castle Meats.
Ah, okay.
So it, so it goes along on the, the.
Right. As soon as you said it, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Good morning, Barry.
I was thinking Disneyland.
Believe me, I'd much rather be on that sometimes. Yes, sir.
Supervisor Forster doesn't usually like his name misspelled.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Oh, where's that at?
We will, we will make that correction for the web, and I also wanted to point out that, that as soon as I get back to the office, we will be posting it to the web. We apologize for that, Supervisor Forster.
No other supervisor gets their name misspelled, so.
We just wanted to see if you guys were paying attention. See, that was, that was a test. You passed.
All right.
Thank you.
You know, you know, one thing.
Watch it out for you, Mr. Chair.
It's, it's, it's a small thing, Barry, but on a lot, a lot of the numbers, it has 21 in 2020. On your recapitulation, it has 2020 and 21, so it flips them. So. If they just make them match up.
Okay.
On the next one. This, this one's fine. No big deal.
We're just trying to keep you on your toes there, Brian.
Pardon?
We're just trying to keep you on your toes.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
But no, I'd say it's a pretty good report.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I like the hardbound copies I keep in my desk. They're just really.
That was, that was her.
At a girl.
Good girl.
Yeah, Barry, one last question.
Certainly.
Why was timber down so much? Is that just?
You know, we, we got that, we get that number from the Board of Equalization. You know, I, I didn't go, I didn't call any of the timber companies, but, you know, I assume this year that, you know, they just didn't have a timber plan for this year.
I could probably tell you maybe.
Albage.
I mean, part, part, part of it is there's timber prices are down so low. A lot of landowners say, hey, why go out and cut our trees at the time you figure in all the harvest plan expenses, which are very expensive? And the price of timber, you're probably going backwards, so people didn't cut much timber.
Right.
Now, that's going to probably change, actually, it won't anymore because it's in El Dorado. We had all the massive fire. El Dorado County is going to have a heck of a spike in timber.
Right.
Okay, is there any public comments? Any further? Okay. Is there any public comments? Any further board comments? Thank you for the report.
Thank you so much.
Very good, except for, except for name misspelling, so.
We will correct that.
All righty.
They misspelled mine, too. Brian turns into brain, so no complaints.
All right, we're going to keep moving. 5J Building Department Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Consideration of Proposed Ordinance, Adding Chapter 15.12 of the Amador County Code by Setting forth an Expedited Streamline Permitting Process for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations as Required by Government Code 65850.7. Suggested action is to waive the reading. Who is presenting this?
Maybe Chuck is.
Now, if that's the case, we can move until we get the staff here.
Yeah.
Tacy's not here, so.
Well, if we go back to 5J right quick, you know, this is unfortunately one of the other things that I see is government overreach again from the state to the county. We put in a charging station in the up country, and it was done expeditedly and quickly. And so this is the government saying, "You shall do it faster." How can we do it faster if we do it as fast as we possibly can? I think, to me, kind of this is a little silly.
Well, um.
The whole idea of electric cars by 2035 is pretty silly, if you ask me.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with that either, but, you know, we are trying, what our point is, is trying to help as much as we possibly can.
I understand.
Yep.
Pat, you're going to be driving one by next year.
Chuck, do we have the staff?
I wouldn't bet a lot of money on that.
I thought.
Now, somebody gave it to me for free, yeah.
Why don't we jump to, Jeff, what are you here for?
Tacy's here.
Okay. Why don't we jump to 5K, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Establishing a Debt Management Policy?
Put you in the speed lane.
You didn't think it was going to be that fast, huh?
No. Good thing I headed down right away. All right.
All right, go ahead. When you're ready.
Okay. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors.
Good afternoon.
I am Tacy O'Netto Ruin, the Auditor Controller, and today we are asking the Board to establish a debt management policy, which also includes the creation of a debt advisory committee. CIO Eily and former Treasurer-Tax Collector Mike Ryan and I had discussed creating a debt management policy several times in recent years to demonstrate our due diligence and to make sure that relevant departments and officials would all be made aware of potential projects and that they would be involved in evaluating the financial needs of the county. But we had not moved forward in the process. So that brings us to why are we doing this now? Jeff Gardner, the Director of Solid Waste, has been working on obtaining funding for the landfill project, which was approved by the California State Revolving Fund, and now the funding is actually being provided through a pro, through a program managed by the California State Water Board. Now, that SRF financial package requires that the county submit a copy of their debt management policy. Further, the State Water Board's construction application instructions state that all applicants coming in for loan funding must have a debt management policy, per Senate Bill 1029. As such, when we found this out, I promised the State Water Board on September 27th that we would work feverishly to bring a debt management policy to our Board of Supervisors for approval at today's meeting, so that we can achieve compliance to move forward with the SRF funding. In regards to the process, the Treasurer-Tax Collector and I reviewed debt management policies from six other counties. And what we did was, we went through them in detail and incorporated particular pieces from several of the different policies that, that we felt were the most relevant and important for our county. And we also added our own verbiage to keep it specific for us. Just to note, this draft policy is, it's not tailored to the SRF funding project and was purposely kept general to meet other future potential financing needs. Our county CIO, county council, and director of solid waste, each reviewed our draft policy and resolution and subsequently agreed to have us bring this policy to you today. So I do want to thank everyone very much who is involved for helping us get this done so quickly. While we can certainly make changes or revisions to the policy now or in the future as needed, we feel that this policy and resolution are a solid effort and meet the requirements of SB 1029 and our own county needs, such as allowing for discretion and flexibility. With that, we would entertain any questions or concerns that you might have at this time.
Is there a reason that you don't have a, like the Chair of the Board of Supervisors on the committee?
I did not, in going through the policies, notice that any of the other counties had a chairman or a board of supervisors. I think the purpose of the committee is to really vet things out so that we, as a committee, can bring it to the supervisors as a whole. I don't know, I mean, we certainly can.
Well, I, I don't know if there's a need to. I just wanted to ask the question. Chuck, what do you think?
We could do it either way. It, we don't issue a lot of debt, so this isn't something that we, we will be delving into frequently. There are other counties that, that do a lot more than we do. We don't even issue the trans every year for cash flow that most places do. And so, yeah, if, if you'd like to, it wouldn't be a major investment in time. I think that's the, maybe the bigger concern is that if you're on this committee, you need to attend those.
Yeah, that's the thing. We don't issue a lot of debt, so it's not going to eat up a lot of time. And I, I think the, the board chair is aware of all the agenda items as they come in. I think it would just be helpful to at least have one member of the board on the committee to, to be upfront on the information.
I'd be, I'd be fine with that. And the way we work, you know, we're, we're all very close-knit around here. There would be an item that came to the board to discuss it before we were ready to even.
Yeah, I would think so. The board would be on, we'd have a discussion before it even hit that committee.
Right. That's what I would expect.
Okay, so if we could make that addition. Supervisor Axe?
I'm not sure whether Chuck or Tacy, but would this plan help us potentially if the jail project needed funding to close the gap?
Yes, it would. This is the kind of thing that when they came in and if they gave us a grade, a graded our, our credit worthiness, the kind of thing that would be looked for, looked.
I'm not saying we are, but.
And, and, but I, I will say that I'm pretty confident now we've got that covered, but, but it would, just in the dark event that we didn't need it, yeah.
Okay, so we can hold you to that?
Any other board comments?
98% sure.
It's an important policy for counties to have, just, you know, to show that you are demonstrating due diligence and to really make sure you have the right, the key players in place regarding the financing options and that everyone's involved. Because sometimes things happen and projects roll along, and it's like, oh, we should have asked so-and-so to be involved in this, or so-and-so, and it's just good to have something in place where it's going to get discussed amongst, you know, a good group of people that are involved in finance.
Okay. Any public comment? Additional board comments? If none, then I need a motion, and I'd like to include that at one change.
All right. I would move we adopt the county debt management policy with the one change.
To add the Chair of the Board of Supervisors or?
Or Supervisor.
Or their designee.
Yeah, Chair or his designee.
Okay.
Your second?
Brian's second.
Okay. Supervisor O'Netto on the second?
Yeah.
Under, under discussion, would it be just as, you know, like the admin committee, would it be the Chair and the Vice Chair?
No, I, I'm just envisioning it. I don't want to overburden.
No, no, I, but as a designee, would be the Vice Chair then?
I'm going along with it, but I don't think we even need that one, but it's.
Okay.
Whoever the Chair designates, I would assume it'd be the Vice Chair.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Most carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you, everyone.
All right. We will, are we ready to go back to 5J?
Let's, let's pull that item. Bring it back in two weeks.
Okay. 5J, we will bring it back in two weeks at our meeting.
Yes, got, now what?
Bring back better. Then we'll go to item 5L, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Allocating $5,000 to Partially Defray Additional Costs to KBGC for Producing and Broadcasting the Board of Supervisors Meetings via Facebook. Funding was allocated in 2122 but was not continued in the current budget. And I, I brought this forward. I thought we had included it, and looking at the budget with our CIO, it was not included, and I think it sure needs to be, this valuable service for all the county residents.
I thought you had given us direction to put it in there, too, and it may just been an error on our part. So if you would like us to continue it every year, just.
As long as they're here.
Can we do that and encumber future boards?
I'll, we'll start, our starting point, we'll include that funding.
Okay.
So through the, into the budget process. It's no guarantee that it wouldn't get cut if, for whatever reason.
Yeah, I'd include it.
But it'd be reviewed every year at the budget here, yeah.
Just like all other spending.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, okay.
Valuable service they do for us.
Need a motion of that effect, then?
Make a motion through the additional funding from the contingencies, the $5,000 a year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And just so you know, we got an estimate one time from another group to, to do this, and that estimate came in about $40,000. Yeah, that was, that was yours ago, too.
Under discussion, I just, I'm just kind of curious, is that, you know, because I had people talk to me about it, you know, since we're on Zoom also, you know, so we're, we're double-dipping, you know, sitting here on putting it on social media, you know, because of whatever it is. So they were just questioning, you know, the extra cost, you know, for KBGC.
Well, I think, too, on KBGC, they put it in Facebook, so it's probably more available.
More available? How can you do more available?
I would think it's probably plays on their contin, it's their continuous.
But I, all, you know, Zoom is there, too, because it's on, on YouTube.
It's just another way to be more transparent, and, you know, it actually is cumbersome for them because they have to monitor the comments coming in. They had some pretty obnoxious comments one time.
And, and that's, and that's the unfortunate thing, is that, you know, some, a lot of those people think that they're getting those comments to us, and we don't get any of those comments unless somebody pulls us off on a sidebar, which we'd get the comments if they were on the Zoom. So, and don't get me wrong, I think KBGC and Jim Giddy has done the most outstanding job in the world at helping the county. I'm just putting some of the questions into there.
Okay. That's a fair question.
Did we want to ask for public comment on this?
I figured everybody'd be raising their hand instead of yawning, so.
Just to make sure.
All right, I hear, I see no public comment, no one on Zoom. Nope, there's a public comment, okay. Don't talk us out of it, whatever you.
Oh, no, 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 no worries. It's a good one. Hi there, Joey Giddy, Jackson, California. I work for KBGC. So something I wanted to add is, not only is this available on Facebook, but this is also on YouTube Live as well. So it is archived on our YouTube as well. So there's two different places that you can always find the Board of Supervisors meetings, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, which includes the, to put it in the budget every year for possible approval? Say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Most carries. Thank you. Onto the minutes, 5M.
I just had some minor corrections.
I had one thing on page four, administrative agency, and talks about this PG&E discussion. Supervisor Brown also required on what the plan is moving forward to get dropped trees removed from people's properties, and the representatives relayed that they would like to work collaboratively on a solution. Is that the right word to use there? Representatives responded? I don't know.
He, he did want to work with us, but, you know.
I don't know if relayed is what you said, but I don't, anyway, take a look at that, Jennifer. So I need a motion to approve with minor corrections.
Still moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes with minor corrections. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Most carries. With the one item pulled off the agenda, we are going to adjourn this meeting and go into closed session. We're not quite done there. So with that, thank you very much.